That I appended to this application last week, if you could possibly bring those up. Pat, that'd be great. There's photographs of the scene from Lewis Street and the scene from Liberty Way, which I just want to familiarize everybody with in the relationship of the properties. These are actually two properties that are interrelated in their use as the tax cards indicate. They both have Lewis Street addresses of eight and 10, but the the retail on Lewis Street is a one-story building with described as a one-story building in the tax assessor's office. We have the basement below and the building known as 10 Lewis Street is actually what we all think of as the New York Sports Club and Sophie's Costume Shop, which is as you head down the hill Liberty Way. There's a pretty steep incline and the tax assessor describes that building as being a two-story building. But it does state in the tax records that the New York Sports Club occupies portions of the basement of eight Lewis Street and first floor and ties into contiguous space at 10 Lewis Street, which is the the one that we think of as being New York Sports Club. So these properties are interrelated. Let's see if you can pull that up. This is the retail on Lewis Street known as eight. And as you can see, it is a one-story building as described in the in the tax assessor's office with the so-called basement below. This is a side view as you start to go down Liberty Way of that part of the building. But within this section of the building is the New York Sports Club as well as the retail use as you get towards the back, as you can see. And as you go further down, thanks, Pat, give one more slide down. Looking back up Liberty Way, you can see how it declines down Liberty Way as you're heading towards Alma Street and that Sophie's Custom Shop there. The entryway to New York Sports Club in the middle, of course. And then if you go down one more scroll, please, Pat. One more down. This is looking up again towards the north, towards Lewis Street with another entry to New York Sports Club. And as you can kind of get the sense of the old warehouse elements of this building. Tom actually tells me before it was turned into New York Sports Club or Amfit in 1981. And before it was a warehouse, it was actually a stable right off Grant Avenue, which is remarkable, but I guess they did have such things at the time. So the question that's risen.
Mr. Haslam, before we move on, just a real quick question. What's on the second floor above Sophia's?
That's Sophia's as well.
Okay. And then the brick area that we're looking at here, that the brick facade, that's all the sports club first and second floor?
Yes. If you scroll down to, well, the existing floor plan, I'll just describe it because we don't have a lot of time and the existing floor plan is in pieces. But there are, there's equipment that's on both the first and second floor of the New York Sports Club to the rear. And then as it heads up towards Lewis Street in the middle as well, Sophie's is on the southeast corner. And then, of course, you have the retail up on Lewis Street. The retail on Lewis Street will remain. Sophie's will disappear. There is a conceptual floor plan of what Costa has in mind at page 16 of the packet.
So wait, 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 Mr. Haslam. Slow down for a sec. You were listening at the briefing yesterday?
I was.
Okay. So you know, we'd like to give you 20 minutes on the pre-app and the goal of the pre-app is to cover the really essential issues about which we're concerned. We have two big concerns that we would really like to have you address one of them right now. And I think the other one, when you come in with site plan, the first one, I'm going to do both. The first one is this question about the non-conformity and the non-conformity being able to switch floors on the basis that it is a lesser non-conformity, a less detrimental non-conformity. That's the first argument and this not that we want you to make. I want to hear exactly your your legal position for that. The second thing is this whole issue of the floor use because I want to get a grip on when this is site plan, really how the floors work in that darn building. Because I've used that building, sad to say, I have used it in that time before COVID. Everybody remembers that. And the thing is, it's got the mezzanine level and then there's like a drop down. And then there's another, it's a, so I just want to know on the inside, when we're ready, walk us through the stories and the uses and the stories. You don't have to do that now. The first thing that you need to do now is walk us through this non-conformity issue and see if we can get, if you've got some leaning of agreement from us. So go for it.
Okay, great. So as you know, under six dash one forty-one of the regulations, you are permitted to decide whether or not an application is no more detrimental to the for existing non-conforming use, which this is because you have a athletic facility on what is ostensibly the first floor of the building. And also there's no parking and it's unclear whether it's been in front of the front rear building lines, but it really is academic because there's, there's not going to be any parking for either one of the uses. But so the question is, is the proposed use any more detrimental to the neighborhood, basically, than the existing use? And the existing use as a health club can continue as a legally non-conforming use. Or you can change it or allow us to change it by finding that this proposed use is no more detrimental. I can go into details of why we feel that way, but I'll tell you that in addition, with the restaurant use is not usually permitted on a second floor, although as mentioned yesterday, we're not exactly sure why that's a a regulation. I think we've all been.
And we're, we're open to changing it, but you would have to, you know where the wording is, you know. When you know, we've got another applicant that's working on rewording and we're open to being innovative to keeping, you know, you heard that whole spiel. However, for right now, you have a non-conforming use on the first floor. You are considering using, switching that, switching to what you consider a less detrimental non-conformity on a different floor. Our regulations don't articulate vertical changes in non-conformities. There are towns that do and ours do not. And we researched this when we had a funny application that was going to go depth south down into a basement with it and with its non-conformity. And there is an issue of what happens when you make a vertical change in a non-conformity. So I'd like you to argue that the way in which a restaurant use is less detrimental in its non-conformity than a gym use and why it is particularly compliant with six one forty-one to shift from the first floor to the second floor.
Well, first argument you can make is the fact that there's really two first floors in this building.
Yeah, I know that's, I was trying not to ask you that part. I'm really aware of that and it's, let's just try not. You're moving it to the upstairs, the non-conformity, not to the one of the two ground floors.
There's.
Mr. Turelli is like, she's crazy.
Non-conforming right now?
Excuse me?
Aren't both floors non-conforming right now?
No, well, the gym is what is explicitly forbidden.
But it's on both floors.
But we, Katie, can't there be a gym on the second floor? If it provide, yes.
On the second floor, yes, on the.
Okay, so and that, see, the thing is, Mr. Turelli, here's the problem with that gym. There is definitely a second floor. There's the, I know you own the building and you know it better, but there's that long flight of stairs that you go up. What is odd, as you point out, is that there's two first floors because there's that half flight that goes to the, to the, to the lower first floor in the back.
But also the geography too, because you've got.
But leave all that and pretend that it's all one first floor. In theory, you could have the gym. The gym is okay on that second floor. So the gym would be all right on the existing second floor. The problem is your non-conforming use is the gym on the first floor, which you will now convert the first floor to a conforming use. But you're going to create a new non-conforming use on the second floor. Now, you don't have to explain this tonight, but that's the thing. You've got to show us that it's compliant. Go ahead, Mr. Turelli.
Thank you. Katie, are gyms allowed on the second floor? I know one-on-one training is, but are gyms allowed?
See, this is the thing. I don't think gyms are allowed. No, I don't think gyms are not one-on-one training. Um, yeah, but, but, but gyms like that, I don't believe are, no.
Well, both floors are.
They're not, they're just not allowed in the CGBR period. I don't, if I, I need to get the exact reference, but that's.
Yeah, we need to check the reference because I thought that we allowed gym use. And of course, now I'm thinking we allow it if there's parking.
No, we, no, we allow one-on-one, Margarita. Remember, remember the dancing.
It's one-on-one. Okay, I'm messing up. I'm sorry.
The dancer and we wouldn't allow her to have the group, the group fitness and then gym is the same type of thing. So if it's one-on-one, it's okay.
Okay, well, it's totally a gym on the second floor. It's totally equipment in a gym. I mean, they do training, but it's totally a gym. Okay. So then I'm a lot more comfortable because what we're saying is we're eliminating the non-conformity, somebody, because this is what we talked about yesterday, but it's working for me. The, we eliminate, we are eliminating the non-conformity on the first floor, creating a conforming use and replacing, replacing the not, wait, 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 replacing, I got to say it aloud so I'm clear. The sec, replacing the non-conformity on the second floor with what Mr. Haslam is now going to argue is a lesser non-conformity. Okay, go.
So the non-conformity goes to conforming by establishment of the restaurant on the first floor?
Then the bakery.
Yeah. And then the non-conformity becomes non-conformity on the second floor by the continuation of the restaurant from the first floor.
You got it. Okay. So Mr. Haslam, you've got some options. One of the options is to get us to address the second floor uses. That may be longer time than you want to spend. So the easier thing would be talk to us about why a restaurant is a lesser non-conformity.
All right. Well, first of all, your, your standard is actually under six dash one forty-one B1 is that the commission must find that the changed use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the used use.
I know.
But so that's your standard, but.
I have trouble with the word detrimental. They all know that. Okay, go ahead.
So as Tom would tell you, because he was actively involved in managing the property, even when he was no longer involved in Amfit and the New York Sports Club was there. They had about 3,000 members of whom about 1,500 were active members.
Really?
Use the facility, you can ask Tom if.
Well, I mean, I was a member, so I can tell you that there were not that many people there, but okay, it could have had 1,500. That's the capacity it was built for, and that's what we need to address. Go ahead.
Okay. And so those memberships, it tells people to obviously work out at anytime that the facility was open. So that was all during the day.
Whereas the restaurant. Very long hours. It had very long hours. Go ahead.
As you will remember, and it's usually, as we all know from the many studies that have been done, including when we were doing it for SoulCycle. Those lots are very popular midday on, on weekdays and on Saturdays. Whereas the restaurant use, although there would be a lunch crowd, that would not be nearly the capacity that you would have with a fitness center or with a dinner operation. So most of your patients would be coming in the evening for evening events, evening meals, et cetera, other than for obviously the bakery and small, relatively small lunch hour. So by comparison, certainly wouldn't have be nearly as demanding on the parking that these sports club has been in the past on Liberty Way. That's probably the, the most important element of this, but also you'd be adding generally, I think, to where's the sports club was a destination location where people such as yourself would get in the car, drive over, park and go work out, get back in the car and go home. We're hoping that this will kind of fit in with the, the general web of Greenwich, Central Greenwich and create a place for people to enjoy the downtown aspects of Greenwich, other shops, et cetera, and stop there for lunch or for dinner or at the bakery and while they're going to their various other duties in and around Greenwich and, you know, help to keep the local downtown aspect of Greenwich valid and vibrant. And I think that this use has that propensity. And obviously it's a lot better used than a warehouse or a stable too. So I think as the years have progressed, I think we're getting progressively.
I have a question.
We should have a stable. I think it's a cool idea.
I love it.
One, one quick question for Mr. Haslam. How does this permission to operate a restaurant on a sec, on the second floor not open up a can of worms for the regulations and for this commission?
Well, again, you have to go under six dash one forty-one when you have a use like this, an existing non-conforming use and you're making it a different use, but less non-conforming. And because the restaurant use is permitted on the first floor, unlike the health club use and it's not permitted on the second floor and even in the gym isn't either. You're making it less non-conforming than the current use and that's permitted under six dash one forty-one. And that's in fact a standard of zoning law because you want to encourage either the elimination or the reduction in non-conformities. Not only is that good common law in this state, but it's also right within your regulations. And there's a reason for that. It's in situations like this where you want to reduce the amount of non-conformities. So that's the, that's the point of it. And as far as opening up can of worms, you could do a text change, I suppose, but as I said, you've had other situations. I think there was next to the Whole Foods store, there's a strip there where there's a first floor on West, on Putnam Avenue. And then if you go down Millbank to the rear, there's also what looks like another first floor and you had that situation, I think.
Well, wait, wait, that's not the Whole Foods. That's, that's where Iziana is, isn't it? Yeah. And then in the back, it has a different story and it goes down a level. Yeah. And so there's a different. But that's probably, they probably decided that was an existing non-conformity a ton of time ago, right?
No, I think that came out fairly recent with staff and the CEO as to how you handle that. And I think it was treated as two floors, but I'm not going to labor the first four aspects. I just, it falls squarely within six dash one forty-one. And I won't go into either whether I think it's a good for a text change or not. I think it might be.
So then there's the issue of how many stories the, the thing has on the inside. But I, okay, so I'm just going to think out loud on this. My sense is that you've got an existing, not, you've got an existing use on all those weird levels it has. If you can rationalize them, we would have to, Katie, do you see what I'm struggling with? The only example I can come up with is the struggle we had with when we, they redid the Apple building. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And I'm trying to, you know, because it was the same thing. The Apple building also had another level in the back. And it was, what did you count as what? Because that.
We're going to have two floors though. It's just, it's distinctly, if you look at the, the floor plan, it's just two floors.
So you're saying we don't have an issue with the floors because we're just going to split it into two and that multi-level will be gone.
Correct.
On the interior. Okay. I, I think Nick tried to tell me that yesterday, but I didn't grasp it. Okay.
So you'll have the, the mezzanine will be eliminated, right?
Well, no, it's the lower level that'll be eliminated. The mezzanine's hard to eliminate, right?
If I could, I think, Margarita, what you're thinking of is when you walk in the old New York Sports Club entrance. That's on one floor there, we have, there was the men's and women's locker rooms, soul cycle room, daycare. There was a lot of things there.
The reception was there too.
I'm sorry?
The reception was there.
And we said, absolutely. Yeah. You walked in and then you walked in straight and go to your left and there was the weight room. And that was a very, that was about 2,000 square feet and you had to step down three steps to it. And I think that's what Margarita is thinking as sort of a third level. But it's not, it's almost, think of it as almost like a split ranch or in a sunken living room. It's like that. You have to walk down two or three steps to the weight area. That's where.
But it's more than that because, okay, I'm sorry. Victoria, number of steps to get to the yoga room?
No, the yoga room is about 20 steps up to get to the yoga room.
And it was off.
But the weight room is about three steps down and the weight room is just by the reception.
And then there's a back, there's a studio in the back.
You are right. Yep.
That has, and how many steps is that?
And that's also, but I, I think that's, I think that's three or four steps.
Okay, you think it, okay, so you, you can turn that into all one first floor is what you're saying. Okay, I'm good with all that. I just wanted to make sure we could make the regs work out.
But you don't have any designated parking for your site, right?
No, correct.
Right. So that, that's why, that's why I was struggling with it because I was recalling that you could not have fitness centers or whatever and it's, and you can, but only if you have parking, which basically no one does, which is why it's a relatively useless.
To your point about the membership, and I think this is important too.
Hold on, just Tom, Tom, just Mr. Turelli, just so I don't lose Katie's thoughts. So Katie, what I was thinking was that since the building is on the avenue, that that has been a non-conforming use, just not having parking in the second, that the whole gym use doesn't have the parking and therefore the second floor was legal. Was, was, so I was thinking the first floor is totally non-conforming and the second floor is only non-conforming in that it doesn't have parking. Does that make any sense? That's where I was when I did the regs over the weekend. Okay. That's what I was saying yesterday. So Mr. Haslam, that's why I was saying, well, the gym use is allowed on the second floor. The issue is you don't have parking. Okay, I'm good now. Okay, Mr. Turelli, go ahead. I interrupted your train of thought.
I'm sorry. Can I just pursue that one second further? So in which case, if that changes to restaurant or whatever, then it becomes which one has a larger parking demand, right?
Bingo. That's going to be the next thing that they have to prove. And but their argument, I shorthanded this. I'm assuming since you are built for, and this is, we just went through this, you're the, the rated capacity, wrong language, but the rated capacity of the gym would be 1,500 people say that are actively using it. What you should really do is what was the anticipation when it was going to be built? What was the anticipation of the, the parking demand? And then you have to prove that you're not going to demand any more parking than what was anticipated in the full construction. We know that the utilization of the gym towards the end was way, way lower because that's why it didn't survive and it was already doing badly before COVID. We know that it wasn't, it wasn't generating business. But the question is, what was, what businesses was it supposed to generate? What parking need would that business have had? And are you making a lower parking demand now? And those are the questions you need to address, all of that zoning stuff. Because we've got to, on this one, we got to go by the book, by the regulations. There's just no question that when we're dealing with CGBR, it's so tricky. We got to be really careful in how we interpret the regs. Agreed? That's our job. He's nodding. I'm sorry. Did I talk really fast and I haven't even had.
No, I think that part of the challenge is going to be that there's not a lot of record from 1981 on this approval for whatever reason. And but what we can do is like what we do.
Which means you've already looked at it and haven't found much.
I've, I've been struggling with that, but of course it's.
Is all the equipment gone?
Yes.
Do you have an idea how much equipment was there originally?
Sure, we could come up with a.
That's exactly all you need to know. How many pieces of equipment?
Plan, the, the plan that is provided in the application, is that a representation of what was there or is that just the second floor?
No, I didn't really lay out the equipment. I mean, is there the shadow of the equipment on there? I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, but you know.
I know, I know what you're saying. It's, no, it's not there. I don't think.
Oh, that's.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
That, that's a tough one too, because you have several rooms that are multipurpose. There was a, there was a spin room on the first floor. There's the weight room that has weights all over the place. Upstairs, there was it used to be the original aerobics room was converted into a I, I forget the name now, but it's a special kind of circuit training called XP one or something like that. And then there was a room you were thinking of, Marvin, the yoga room upstairs where you go down two steps, two, three steps. That had a multipurpose. There was boxing classes in there. There was, so you've got the equipment, but you've also got these, all these other things going on.
But Jim, but, but Mr. Haslam knows how to calculate that. He knows that the, the dance studio or yoga studio, boom, boom. He knows how to figure out what the usage max is on that, that he can do without having the equipment. Y'all can probably find pictures, even get New York Sports Club, tell you roughly how many pieces of equipment. What would the parking demand have been in total? And boom, you're just generating less overall parking demand now. That's what you got to show.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a way to present it in a way that's as factual as possible with what the historic use has been.
I mean, my, my sense is you're going to have a lower parking demand, but it's going to have a bigger crunch. And a restaurant always has peak hours. The gym didn't have hours that were, that were as the gym hour, the gym peak hours, and we're going to ask you this, the gym peak hours did not coincide with the avenue's peak hours.
Correct. And I don't think a restaurant will either. Yeah.
Well, the avenue's peak hour is a restaurant time. Honestly, it's shopping time and restaurant time. The gym was crowded from seven to nine in the morning, for example. You know, or evenings, that's when gyms get used and you can, I mean, there's data from Equinox. I mean, we know, we know when their peak hours are, we have it in our files. So we know when peak hours are for, for gyms. That's, we've done a whole bunch.
That's the other peak hour though is five, five to nine, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
So you, you know, you can make, so you've got data. You just need to give us, it's easy. You can give us data where I think the non-conformity. You know, you can make your case, the, the, I'm going to say it, the less detrimental. The parking. Because I think it's really, as Katie said, it's the only thing. Anything else that we, I know we hit all the regulation issue. Does anybody else have any big questions on this as a pre-app item?
I just want to get a little clarification. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go right ahead. Don't apologize.
If, forget about the, the non-conformity.
Yeah, we're done.
If you're putting a restaurant which is allowed use. And there's, and there's no issue with parking. What, what is the issue with the fact that you're going to a non-conformity and you have to show that there's no, it's no more detrimental?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Mr. Levy.
I, I know it's, I'm sorry. So forget the non-conformity. If you're putting in a restaurant, there really is no parking issue. Is that correct?
No, they still have.
You have to show what it is, I suppose, but what is the parking issue if, if you're putting in a restaurant regardless of whether it's.
I think it just goes again to Wayne, what is more detrimental to the neighborhood by way of the uses? Because you have an existing legally non-conforming parking situation, we think. Although there appears to be a front building line on Lewis Street, I just can't find the rear building line in the rear, even though they've amended it several times. So we may have to look into that. It may be that it's exempt from parking requirements altogether. It's unclear from the maps.
Because I, I was assuming it was. So the point is that you just have to clarify those issues so we understand that.
Yes. Oddly, in 1978, they amended the map so that shows that there's a front building line right along the front of the building on Lewis Street. But, but the, the rear building line has been amended several times to the rear, but it doesn't seem to fall directly behind our building. So it's a question of how the CEO is going to interpret that. But now either event, it's either legally conforming or legally non-conforming in its current confap.
And, and so if you're putting in a restaurant, do you know how many seats you're expecting to put in or you don't know?
Well, I think Costa is hoping to get in 300 seats possibly, but they're not going to be all actively used at the same time necessarily. Some, as you can see, are kind of a rent spaces, et cetera, but it depends. Costa, you can adjust that if you want to.
Mr. Costa, you need to.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Yeah. So 300 seats is basically if you have every chair in the restaurant full. So nobody comes with four people or six people. They come with two or three. So it would never be, you know, to capacity of the seating in the space. Hello?
Yes, I'm here. Okay.
We're deep in thought.
I'm not good with the zoom. I'm sorry.
No, no, and you know, you said, Mr. Levy asked you a question, then he was thinking about the answer and then everybody was waiting for Mr. Levy. Okay. So Mr. Levy, do you decide?
So I, 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 maybe I missed something. So if, if, if you don't, do you need 300 seats or you don't need 300 seats? Or I don't understand if, if, if you're never going to be using them all.
Well, well, you lay out the restaurant. I mean, a table, you can't just move chairs around. So some, some chairs are empty and some chairs. You, 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 you get tables of four, you get tables of five and you have a table of six. So you don't seat six people, you know, that's part of the 300.
So are you going to have, and you're having a bench space also? Is that part of the?
Correct.
Okay, that's the point. And so regardless of whether it's of the conformity issue, if you were putting in a this restaurant, there would be, the, the, the issues are the same regardless, regardless of whether it's whether the it is legally non-conforming or, or, or conforming, I assume. So you have to tell us about, you have to demonstrate the need for parking so we can evaluate it. Is that the point? Is that the point?
Um, well, no, you see, the thing is, they don't have any parking. That the building has no, no.
And the parking issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So since they have no parking, what they have to show is that their proposed parking demand does not exceed the current parking demand for the gym and.
We don't know what that is really.
But they can figure it out. They can figure it out. I I I think that, you know, that Mr. Haslam is a landed youth fraternity who's, we've seen a lot of him. I think he's significantly experienced and knows how to build a case. So we will have him figure it out and um, you know, he can do that. Mr. LaRoe, you look very lost in thought. Do you want to add something? No? Okay, you just looked like you were chewing on something that you wanted to say. Okay, so they have to show us the existing parking demand and what what the proposed is and that it's um, that the it's a, that the nonconformity is being reduced, if you will. I I like reduced better because of the demand, but the idea is that parking that you can't accommodate is detrimental.
Um, if I may just address Mr. Levy's comments quickly. Um, one way of doing it possibly is like we do at the Grant's Time Building, which we went to Urban Outfitters and there's no parking at that location either. But we were able to establish that historically, the Grant's Time had at its peak sixty-four employees working out of that building. And therefore, under term Maitland, we were able to establish what was kind of ghost spaces by which um, you could allow that building to be changed into Urban Outfitters and an office use. So we tried doing something like that, Mr. Levy, I think, by way of comparisons, which we will do.
I think you can pace out in any gym, you know how much equipment fits per square foot of the gym, and you can just figure out how much equipment was there. You know how big the studios were. You know how many weights were in that weight room that's off to the side. You can figure all this out. Uh, we have one member of the public that wishes to speak.
They can probably find photos of the gym, too.
Yeah, yeah. And you think they're, I think they can figure this out. Um, we have a member of the public who wishes to speak, Mr. Um, yes, you just did it, Pat. Did you bring up Sophia? I'm not seeing her all of a sudden.
Sorry, I lost her, too.
Um, oh, wait, I don't know what happened. She lowered her hand and then, okay, here we go. We're going to bring in a member of the public, if that's okay with you, Mr. Haslam.
Yes.
Um, um, Sophia, you don't have a last name on, so I'm going to have to call you by your first name. I think Costa, are you Mr. Costa or is that your first name?
My first name.
Okay, I apologize. I was doing that, too. I I apologize for the lack of courtesy. Uh, Sophia, you you're unmuted if you want to go ahead. Ma'am? Uh, we can hear your background, but we can't hear you. Sophia? Ma'am? Um, and the thing was, I was about to wrap this up and.
Might get off, but I don't think our audio is working.
Do we know whether this Sophia is the same Sophia that ran the?
I believe this is the same Sophia. It would be too much coincidence.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, I've a uh, maybe a suggestion.
Yeah, you keep working on your tech and we'll give you a chance to work it out.
Suggestion, if uh, if Mr. Haslam comes back, uh, maybe arranging a five-minute tour of the building so we can really understand what the levels inside. The plan is, I, the plan isn't kind of, is kind of hard to understand for me. And uh, it's it's the first floor, second floor on the bakery side that's confusing and steps up, steps down, that kind of thing. Just a five-minute runaround so we understand what's on what floor and what's not.
Of course, yeah, happy to.
Um, okay. Um, Sophia, can you, can you try to speak now? Okay, I'm so sorry because I I believe this is the owner of the retail shop. Um, all right, does that address all the things you that we think are primary issues in the pre-app?
And she email you or text you any questions?
Yes, we're going to ask to do that. Um, Patrick and Katie, maybe you could get in touch as well, follow up. Um, okay, anything else you guys that you want to give us, thoughts, guidance, input? That includes you, Victor, okay? All right. Okay, so we'll see you when when we see you.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, the next discussion item, as mentioned previously, has been postponed. Uh, we now go to item two, which is the Housing Authority of the Town of Greenwich for a five-year extension of time to complete a site plan and special permit at thirty-one through thirty-six Armstrong Court. And who is representing the applicant?
It would be Mr. Bristol.
And you've got him?
I do.
All right, I got him. And maybe we both did. Do you remember the time we clicked on a name at the same time and it ended up demoting the person?
Or or muting them incessantly? That's always a funny.
That's always the good one. All right, Mr. Bristol, we're waiting for you to unmute.
There we go.
All right.
Sorry about that. I normally do it on my laptop. I had to do it on my phone today. Um, go, good, uh, good evening, everyone. Christopher Bristol represents the Housing Authority, um, requesting a five-year extension of the site plan approved in two thousand and special permit of uh, uh, approved in two thousand and sixteen for the renovation of uh, the Armstrong Court, um, housing, um, buildings as well as the construction of uh, some townhouses on the property as well as some site improvements. Um, phase one is done. Um, which uh, and uh, we're going to be starting phase two. Uh, the phase two is the renovation of buildings one, three, and six. Um, we also have to redo uh, some sidewalks uh, in order to improve or to meet ADA compliance. Um, so uh, in order to have enough time under the site plan to finish construction, uh, we're asking for an extension.
Anybody on the commission have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Bristol, if you can relate to your client. I say, I think these, the the buildings right there on Hamilton Avenue uh, were success. Uh, I think actually they fit in. It looks really great when you're going by. But I did notice the other day, actually, that a significant tree that had been there for a long time that actually contributed to that success had been cut down for some reason. Uh, it was kind of brought to our attention. It was cut down at the behest of Ezra Ever Source. Although a picture I have, and actually looking at it right in front of me, it seems Ever Source had been out there and uh, had done their trimming already to that tree. Um, if you can actually find out actually what happened to that tree.
I will.
Because I believe it was on the uh, the original um, landscape plan that was approved to be saved. And now that it's gone, it it takes a lot away from that success of those buildings. Um, and I know, I think there's some some additional trees that need to be planted in those areas. So it would be good to have that happen as soon as possible. Um, and if the, if uh, your client's having issues with getting the trees, I know that the uh, Tree Conservancy has a a lot of them available for planting. Uh, and they would be happy to facilitate and help you out if that, if need be.
Oh, great. That's, I'll certainly look into that one tree that you mentioned. Uh, this is the first I'm becoming aware of it, and um, I'll pass that information along to to McLean as well. Uh, that's noted very helpful.
Okay, because it's interesting, that tree, that tree really added to that a lot.
Is it obvious, Nick and Mr. MacRae, where that tree was for Mr. Bristol?
When I went by and took pictures of this, stump was still there. And it's a very unfortunate situation because the buildings, the landscape they put out there, everything was done. It was looking really good. And now that that tree is gone, it's really, I believe, in my opinion, a compromised site.
Well, I mean, I will say this in that, I mean, we have some work to do, obviously, so we're going to have some additional back and forth. So it's something that I'll definitely look into and hopefully we'll be able to resolve it, you know, immediately.
Great, any, any, any answers that you can get, if you can get it back to staff, that would be great.
Understood.
Ladies, so ladies and gentlemen, this is the tree that Mr. MacRae was mentioning. It's a former glory.
Um, we, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, um, Mr.
Picture.
Okay, and if you don't mind.
What kind of tree was it, do you know?
I believe it was an oak tree.
If somebody doesn't mind, um, the Tree Conservancy actually just raised its hand. Well, Ms. Messina raised her hand. Um, if the Tree Conservancy would like to comment on this, would you please go ahead?
I just want to support what Mr. MacRae has said. We questioned the tree warden, um, and he was unaware of that tree coming down. And then we were told by the Housing Authority that Ever Source requested it. Um, but because Ever Source requests that a tree come down is not sufficient reason for a tree to come down. So we would also be very interested in in understanding why, why that that beautiful, large, mature tree was taken down.
So, Mrs. Messina, sorry, Madam Chair, uh, the uh, the tree warden did respond to an inquiry that we made. Uh, it was not a street tree. Uh, so it was not in in the tree warden's purview, so it is on private property. Um, but however, as Mr. MacRae noted, it was on the site plan as to stay. And um, so it was part of the tree preservation and landscaping plans.
Thank you. Um, can I just say?
Ms. Messina, we.
Question as to quasi-private, we we've talked before about Housing Authority property. The Tree Conservancy does plant on Housing Authority property because it is quasi-public land. So there is a gray area there.
Okay. Um, Ms. Messina, Mr. MacRae blissfully offered trees from the conservancy. If um, the Housing Authority were to concur with that and uh, would is, in fact, would the Tree Conservancy be able to um, offer up um, some plantings?
Yes, Mr. MacRae previously asked us, and yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much, Ms. Messina. So, uh, Mr. Bristol, if you would, I I think at this point there's the key, um, Patrick?
There's more hands up in the room, Madam Chair.
Okay, at this point, um, I think that the, that's Ellie Brown from the last application. Or maybe she was up at the wrong application, so we'll check. So um, I think at this point, the issue, we might want to clarify this issue that Ms. Messina has raised about whether that's town land when it's the Housing Authority or not, if it's municipal land or not. The truth of it is, is to move forward from here and to offer up uh, some enhancement to the to the new townhouses appearance from the street and offer them some landscaping. That's a terrific thing. Um, so uh, why don't we leave it that um, we would have Mr. Bristol return to staff with an answer on that? Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Uh, just to clarify, does that mean that that we're talking about just the perhaps the replacement of that tree or uh, maybe even more than one? Or what what are we um, asking and specifically?
Hold on a second. I have to bring her back again. So, okay, ma'am, Ms. Messina?
Yes.
Um, were you just talking about doing a one-for-one or would you be able to do more than one?
We would love to do more than one. I think it's it's very much needed right there.
I I would, I'd just remind the commission that this project is is in progress. So there there is planting that's going to be added and and, you know, this isn't the end of the road. It's not, uh, it's not a loss of one tree and no more planting.
But on the other hand, anything that we can do to be supportive of the Housing Authority's beautification efforts um, through a public-private partnership would be terrific. So we'd love to take, to leverage that offering from Ms. Messina because I'm sure the Housing Authority would be delighted to have the cost savings as well.
Certainly, with any private property, if they want to plant more trees, they're welcome to do so.
Okay, so we've got a battle plan. I'm gonna.
Just bring it back to uh, to the end of here. Uh, the approval letter that we're looking at to extend, this is from July nineteenth of two thousand and sixteen, had a number of conditions, just to read one. Um, uh, provide the following screening plan, provided uh, to staff, better screening of parking lots from Hamilton Avenue. And it also said the Housing Authority should work to retain as many of the current mature trees as possible. So that was actually part of our original approval back uh, years ago. Just wanted to get that out there.
All righty, um, Ellie Brown, if you are here to speak about the um, Armstrong Court application extension?
Ms. Brown, if you could unmute yourself, that's the button in the bottom right or at the upper, I'm sorry, bottom left or?
You never know where it is. It's in different places.
Apple device.
Different places on different people's computers. Ms. Brown? Okay, all right, it's still not working. Okay, um, uh, does anybody have any objection to uh, closing this item and moving on it? Please raise your hand. Okay, no objections to. Okay, no objections. Uh, Mr. MacRae, if I could please have a motion?
Okay, get my notes together here. Uh, this is a uh, thirty-two, thirty-six Armstrong Court. Uh, this is PLPZ two thousand and sixteen.
Thirty-one, it's just thirty-one, thirty-six for what it's worth.
Thirty-one, thirty-six?
Yeah, for what it's worth.
Okay. Uh, PLPZ two thousand and sixteen, uh, one eight seven, and PLPZ two thousand and sixteen, one eight eight. Um, motion to approve the request for an extension of time in accordance with section six fourteen one of the Building Zone Regulations. Final site plan and special permit to renovate six existing buildings, enclosed walkways, balconies, and construct six new residential buildings and increase the number of parking spaces and various site improvements. Um, all conditions of the original seven, six, sixteen approval shall be continued. And then the additional five-year extension of time would to complete work would be on seven thirteen, two thousand and twenty-six.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded it. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing.
Thank you.
Our next application is Sheriel Delaney at One Meadowwood Drive for a preliminary subdivision. Um, and who's representing Ms. Delaney?
It would be Mr. Hegney.
Mr. Hegney, there he is, another legal argument to be made. Hello, Mr. Hegney, if you would proceed. Um, I believe you had your law clerk at our briefing, and you are aware of the issues we raised.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a preliminary subdivision application for a property that's fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight square feet in the R twenty zone. Uh, there is a one lot uh, that we're proposing to create of twenty thousand, five square feet that would front on Mersey Lane and the existing house lot uh, which accesses from Meadowwood Drive via an access strip uh, is thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three square feet that uh, would be the second lot. Um, since this is a preliminary uh, subdivision application, there are a number of issues that we need to resolve before we come to you as a final. This isn't really a vote that you take. Uh, this is uh, identifying those items that need to be addressed uh, and addressing them before we come back to you with a final plan. And those include uh, an appeal with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is currently pending uh, for frontage, uh, frontage variance and lot shape variance uh, to prepare a detailed drainage summary report and show how drainage would be handled on the site. Uh, prepare a restoration plan for the conservation easement area uh, and how demarcation would be handled uh, to preserve that area. Uh, prepare a detailed development plan uh, and include a coastal zone application with the final plan. Uh, this is how you have proceeded on other recent preliminary subdivision uh, applications. Uh, I'll give you two examples, two forty-nine Valley Road uh, where we had some significant uh, wetland issues. Uh, I I think actually approved that in two thousand and nineteen uh, to proceed to final uh, and is now pending uh, for one of the future meetings this spring. And the other is Indian Field, eighty-nine Indian Field Road, uh, which you also had proceed to final. And the other is Indian Field, eighty-nine Indian Field Road, uh, which you also had proceed to final. Uh, we didn't have, uh, any, uh, drainage on that. Uh, we're still looking at how we were going to handle, uh, access and frontage. Uh, and so that, uh, is again in progress. And, uh, these are the items that need to be addressed before you can consider and actually vote on a, uh, a final plan. And we would ask that you, uh, uh, vote to proceed to final at this stage so we can address all these items, most particularly appearing in front of the Board of Appeals at a, a, a meeting in the future.
You haven't scheduled yet.
Uh, we have not scheduled it.
Okay.
But it is pending.
Okay, so Mr. LaRoe, could you toss up the subdivision plan?
It's, uh, slide three on the, uh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you remember when we couldn't all look at something at the same time? We all used to, do you remember that? We all used to have to stand, we'd all have to stand up on the, at the dais and, and we'd have to crowd around the, if we didn't have enough site plans to look at them? Okay. There we go. All right, so the comment you got from conservation is your proposed open space layout and the fact that it's a split. And, uh, and that they're commenting that it is, at this point, a low-quality area environmentally. Um, and a bunch of questions at once. This decision to split so that area A is on the far-left area, and then, you know, you've got B and C are together, and then you've got this gravelled, uh, which would be removed and restored. Could you just comment on why you decided to go to the left, other than the fact that that's not a usable part of the lot for the, um, for the owner?
Uh, it, it, we, we need to provide the fifteen percent, that's part of it.
Why not in the center? Why not put it all together?
Well, we, we certainly could do that. If that's the direction that the commission would like us to go in, uh, we can certainly work on that.
I believe that the direction, well, the direction I'd like to go in is to provide a, a conservation area on the fifteen percent that is acceptable in terms of its environmental value to the conservation department. And that you, you give them what you would do with that conservation area, what you would do with that, that now open space because it presently would not really, it has no value right now since it's basically, it seemed, it had some, as I remember from the aerial, it's got some, some plantings.
Um, it's primarily a lawn area.
But it's primarily, there you go, but it's primarily lawn. Um, yeah, it's got, it's got a tree there.
Well, there was a tree there, it got knocked down in a recent storm.
I see, did the storm happen?
Yeah, I, I'll give you an example of, of just what you're describing. Uh, we did one over on the Field Point Road, on the east side of Field Point Road, actually very near, uh, this.
Yes.
Put the, uh, open space in the center of the site. It actually had been part of the house and driveway.
Yep.
Tous court, uh, and we ripped that out, and that's now being restored as a, uh, open space area. And I, I would envision doing, uh, something similar here.
Okay, as long as I would say, have the discussion with c- conservation first. Um, and see what they think has the environmental value, see what kind of restoration they're looking for in terms of environmental value. And then, um, you're only going to go to ZBA, um, for the circle at this point in time? Or would you go for the, what you would need on development as well? I'm just curious, it's not really my business.
We have two appeals pending, uh, with, and that's the frontage variance, because we're at ninety-six.
Right.
Square, uh, lineal feet, and we need a hundred, and then, of course, the lot shape.
Okay, all right, so, uh, those are all my questions. Uh, we discussed, uh, we discussed how this functions at length during the briefing. Um, there's the circles, um, and this is for, um, Pat, would you just show everybody where the, uh, the cursor? So this is what the issue is on the far right? Well, that one works barely. Um, okay, there is one more thing. In one of the letters we received, uh, one of the neighbors had done some math, Mr. Hegney, and stated that you were using the accessway for some calculation, and now I'm not remembering exactly what it was.
We did the, we used the accessway in calculating the, uh, conservation easement area percentage. So it's a percentage of all of the square footage, but we are not using it and determining square footage for the lot for FAR purposes.
And that's pursuant, in case anybody needs a refresher, that's pursuant, um, oh, Mr. Hegney, what's that case? Who, it's on, it was on Mayo or Field Point?
Field Point.
Field Point, okay, so the case, there was a case on Field Point where, um, it was, um, determined that the accessway must be, must be excluded when calculating FAR for the lot, and that is in the same general vicinity. Uh, does anybody else from the commission, I'm sorry, I talked a lot, does anybody else from the commission have questions?
Uh, yes, actually, for, uh, uh, actually, Mr. Hegney and staff, uh, we comments back from engineering, uh, that they, uh, their comment was, uh, we submit prior to preliminary subdivision approval. Uh, but they never really got anything, correct? It was just the map, but there was no drainage or anything that was actually submitted. And I'm just wondering if this is, uh, you know, uh, if this would hold anything up, if this is an issue with engineering at the moment?
Uh, no, uh, when they made those comments some time ago, uh, they asked that we put particular notes on the proposed subdivision map. Uh, and those are on the right-hand side of the map, uh, that, uh, engineering had requested. Uh, in the other two examples I gave you, we just said we were going to do our drainage report and come back with it, so.
Uh huh.
Um, I don't think this would hold up anything, uh, in terms of proceeding, particularly with the Board of Appeals.
Okay, uh, and if you're, the conservation area that's in the center now, it's kind of in a regular shape because there's a, a, a planted area there uh, that, that existing that's behind the neighbor's garage, I think. Uh, if, uh, the conservation has moved to the center, would you consider, uh, removing whatever that planted area is? So it's, uh, uh, goes from edge to edge, property line to property line?
Yes, we certainly can, can look at that as part of the reconfiguration of the conservation easement area.
Great, great idea. Um, okay, anybody else in the commission? I know not, based on the number of letters we received, that we're going to have a lot of public input on this. Um, anybody else in the commission? Okay, first speaker is Jonathan Martin. And, um, just so you know, Mr. Martin, we have, oh, I just dropped all my papers. Um, it, just, you, uh, Mr. Martin, we, we have all read everybody's letters. Uh, but, um, please feel free, uh, to emphasize the key points, hello?
Sure, thanks for, uh, thanks for having me. Uh, good evening, Madam Commissioner, John Martin of Martin Law. Um, we do have many people who would like to speak, we try to keep that, um, we try to limit it that to, to four of the neighbors, if that's okay with you, if not, they can.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we, we didn't want to keep you up all night, um, so.
Normally, and normally, we, we, we try to go to sleep at some point. But, um, Mr. Martin, yes, um, no problem to have the neighbor speak, it's just, if they're not covering the same points, we'd be deeply grateful, and please go ahead.
Yeah, sure, um, I just got an email from the America Association, this is the road that the proposed lot would access, that they have unanimously voted against it, um, that's just NFYI, um, it's being vehemently opposed by every property owner around the proposed lot.
So, um, Mr. Martin, that's a private street?
Yeah.
And so the, the homeowners are, will not allow access?
I, I don't know if the, uh, One Meadowwood has access, but they don't want to allow access if they don't, we, we haven't done a title search yet.
Mr. Hegney?
Um, my client actually has access and has contributed to the maintenance of the road over time.
Okay.
Fair enough. Um, so I've been out to the proposed lot, I don't know if anyone else has been able to get out there. But putting it simply, it, it, it doesn't pass any part of the smell test of being a lot, it's a narrow little sliver. There's no room for a house, and it, besides not passing a smell ta- test, it, it doesn't actually pass any zoning laws. Um, it's, it's too narrow, it doesn't have street frontage, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's not a lot. And, and just listening to Chip's last presentation and, and the commission going back and forth with him, you guys were talking about having, how, how to eliminate non-conformities. In this application, this is creating a non-conformity. And then, if it passes as a subdivision, it has to go for more variances, and it's even more non-conforming, and more non-conforming. Um, also, hearing you speak last time on your plan of conservation, this is a green strip of property that's not big enough to be a lot, and now they want to put a house on it, well, that's not very, that, that would do nothing to the plan of conservation for this neighborhood. It would, it would urbanize it. Um, as.
Um, so this is, um, the commission really struggles with this every time we get one of these, I'm, I'm just gonna, and I'm sure Mr. Hegney's going to help me do this, Mr. Martin. The way it works is, yes, you're right, the lot is non-conforming, it would not meet our regulations. However, the zoning board of appeals has the authority that we don't have to, to find hardship and waive those restrictions that exist that it is not meeting, which in this case would be the total frontage and the fact that it is not wide enough to accommodate the circle. That decision does not fall to us. Um, we never can be completely comfortable about somebody not leaving the decision to us, but that's the law. And we have, so, um, it goes to the Board of Appeals and they make the call on whether or not the lot has hardship that is unique to it, and they make the decision whether or not to provide the variances. So what I would say is, um, we're happy to hear from everybody with your concerns, but you should definitely plan on attending the Board of Appeals meeting and speak your concerns there about the variances being granted.
Absolutely.
The right venue for you.
Yeah, and we plan on, I was just making a parallel between the conversation that we're having and that.
Yes, absolutely, and yes, we want to enforce the plan of conservation. I mean, we want to do those things, but there's a place where we don't have authority, and that's where it is. Katie, were you going to say something?
I was going to say that the regulations contemplate this procedure. Um, so if you recall, this is a preliminary application, so there's no real formal standing, um, with this process that we're in right now, this is just a guidance. Um, so as, as the chairman's appropriately stated, this commission doesn't deal with hardship and non-conformity in that way. And, um, when the application comes back to the commission as a final, that's a different story. Uh, but for right now, with this being a preliminary, this is just an opportunity for the commission to vet some issues and, and give guidance.
Sure, and then, um, moving on off of, off of the hardships, um, in, in your Article Four subdivision, it's to ensure that any land subdivided can be used for building purposes without danger to health or public safety. Um, and there have been some health and public safety issues already on this street, and, um, many of the neighbors want to address those, and since they live there, they're, they're, they're better to tell you about the actual incidents that are serious that have happened, um, and whether they want to create more traffic on that street. So I would turn it over to, to the neighbors.
Great, okay, um, I'll leave you up, Mr. Martin, and, um, you're representing them, you said, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh.
Not all of them, though, I'm not sure who will, there's more than.
I'm going to bring up the first person with their hand up, it's, um, well, uh, it's John LaFerrazie? Oh, no, yes, it's John LaFerrazie?
Yeah, he'll be perfect.
Okay, uh, you're, you're, I, I hope he takes that to heart. Mr. LaFerrazie, yes, you're great, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Um, my wife and I, Debbie Loferris, we are, uh,
Loferris.
We live at seven Mercia Lane, which is at the bottom of the circle. And, uh, we're opposing having any house built on that lot. Uh, basically, some of our concerns are, are drainage, since we are downhill. Uh, we're concerned about the width of Mercia Lane, which is a private road. We're concerned about the additional traffic, and we're concerned about the extreme narrowness of a lot as to how, uh, a, a fairly large house can fit on a parcel like that. I mean, uh, the property already has a, a house on it, it's been that way. Uh, we've lived on Mercia Lane for over twenty years. And, uh, when we purchased our lot, we were told by the, uh, the developer, who was Andy Carr, that that property would always remain open.
Hmm.
And, uh, we have a big concern with drainage. The drainage on the street goes through our property and empties out onto the, uh, state DOT weigh station. And we'd be concerned about the size of the pipes and any additional water flow that would go into the drainage. And we're very concerned about drainage going onto our own property since our property goes downhill. And the fact that we feel that a house really wouldn't fit with the other houses on the street, all things considered.
So, sure, one of the things is, um, that we have to make a distinction right now between the subdivision decision and what get considered, what gets considered at the development decision. So, the drainage would have to be considered on development. Uh, yesterday, we talked at the commission about whether, if the subdivision were, were to be approved, whether we would want to bring it forward with the development, would normally not come back to us for its development proposal. But if there are enough concerns from the neighborhood, we could bring it back so that there's an open and public, so that there is public ability to comment when we have, when we look at the development plan. So it would be two steps, the drainage and anything that they would put, if they got approved, would be approved, that would be looked at down the road. So, uh, I guess you might want to count on lots of meetings because first you came to see us, then you'll go to the zoning board of appeals, and depending on what they, uh, they do, it comes back to us for the approval or not approval of the subdivision. And then, we might ask them to come in with a development plan. We don't normally for that kind of application, but we could, depending on the concerns you all raise.
Well, uh, thank you for hearing us, and we'll.
Thank you very much.
We're ready to, uh, attend any meeting we need to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, the next speaker is Laura Gladstone. And, ma'am. And it looks like you're ready to go, no, you're still muted.
Did you call me, sorry?
I did, we called you, you're here, you're, yes, you're enabled, you're, we can hear you, hello? And you're a little blurry, uh, my, um, Gladstone, turn off your video.
Thanks for hearing us.
Yeah, there you go, okay, let's see if we can hear you now.
Yeah, I'm trying.
No, you're breaking up still. Um, can you try calling?
In the country, can you hear me better?
A little bit.
Sorry, I'm on vacation, so I'm trying to dial in, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, and you dialed in by phone?
Should I try calling?
No, this is, I think we can hear you.
I think we can hear you, okay, good, it sounds like you're okay now. Yeah, go ahead, give it a shot.
Okay, thanks, thanks commissioners. Um, I am Laura Gladstone, live at three Mercy Lane, and I would see the proposed property from the right side of my house. And so, this, I, I'm, I'm not sure of all the ins and outs of what goes on in, uh, your commission and the ZDA, I'm learning, as you know, I'm on appointments committee, so I try to understand what you guys are doing, it's great if it doesn't. Um, first of all, um, they're putting a smaller house on our street, um, will devalue at least nine other neighbors. And the neighbors on Bush are, uh, very much opposed to this, that abut Mercy Lane as much as we are. So, um, I mean, I think everyone knows that in our, that putting a small modular house would devalue the rest of the properties on the street, and, uh, that just seems very incredibly unfair. Um, also, as RTM member, representing District Two, I know that the residents in my district have expressly stated that they do not. Um, also, as RTM member, representing district two, I know that the residents in my district have expressly stated that they do not want this type of subdivision in our district. And it will set us terrible precedent strip. And finally, um, the additional property and driveway will be dangerous. It already is a very small, narrow street. Um, there are, there'll be four more additional drivers in that house. And we have children and elderly people walking up and playing on that street every day. Um, we've already had a really bad bike accident on that street and I would hate for something else to happen. And, um, finally, I think it will have an environmental impact. And they're taking down two beautiful mature trees in the neighborhood as well as causing environmental harm. So those are my concerns and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gladstone. Uh, I did, was everybody pretty much got what Ms. Gladstone was saying? She was concerned about the traffic, there's been a bicycle, there's been an accident, she's concerned about the children playing, um. And the loss of green space and trees. And the additional, uh, development in general. Um, Cap Lusane, I'm, I bet I got that one wrong. Hello, if you would go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
No. Sorry. Hi, I'm Cap Lusane, I'm a surgeon, I border on the eastern end of the proposed subdivision at two Mercy Lane. I'm against it as all the other members of the Mercy Lane Association, as are all the people on Bush Avenue that border this property, as I'm sure you're well aware. I was involved in a bicycle accident where I was hit by a Cadillac Escalade at three o'clock on a very clear day on that street. The problem with the, this subdivision and the entrance onto the street, and one thing I do want to correct Mr. Hegney on. The Andy Carr, when he subdivided, gave that lot one driveway, in fact, that they bought access into. Meadowwood on that and they were not given another second driveway onto that lot. But the visitors may, on that road, it goes in a direction, it's down. Down an incline and it goes in a direction on the west, west to east. And I was hit on a perfectly clear day because the sun was in the eyes of the guy that came at me. And I ended up in Greenwich Hospital. This entryway to this lot is exactly the same problem, it's on a narrow road, it's coming around a turn. And on an incline, and I think that this lot and the entryway in and out of. Mercy Lane are going to create a health hazard. And if it gets built and they go in and out, it's not a question of if, but just when, you're gonna have another accident on that street.
Okay. Because of visit, there is not, that you can't see people?
The prob, the problem with it is, it's got an, it's a narrow street, it's got an incline and it's got reflections and sunlight and like. I never in a million years thought I was gonna be hit at three o'clock in the afternoon by a Cadillac Escalade. And that's exactly what happened. And we've got young children on multiple houses, we've got an elderly lady at the end of the street who walks down there. And I think that entryway, the driveway is gonna create just another unjustifiable risk to that street.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you very much. Uh, the next speaker is Brianna Lusane. And, there we go. And, okay, Bri- Brianna Lusane. Well, that's weird. What happened? Um. Wow, that took a really long time.
Hello?
Hello, you are unmuted, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, thank you Chairperson Alban, commissioners and board members for your time. Um, I understand that you didn't want to hear the same sort of talking points that you heard previously from our neighbors. But I just wanted to reiterate this very strong opposition from all the residents on Mercy Lane. As well as the neighbors behind us on Bush Avenue. Um, the lot size is in the in the layout of a lot, it's actually not a legal lot to subdivide. And I know that we're here specifically to talk about the subdivisions, so I'd like to stress specifically the subdivision and how we are against that. Um, just to reiterate and support my neighbors and my husband. There are children on the street, um, there is an elderly lady. And with more cars that could be added with an additional house with four drivers, it would make it dangerous. Plus as well from the UPS drivers and the FedEx drivers and any other repair person there, that would increase the traffic on that site. It's a very narrow street, um, the conservation area would also be, um. Detrimental and and destroyed from what I understand. And, um, obviously, we will address the runoff issues, um, at a later point in in support of our neighbor, Mr. John LaFerrazie. But, um, just wanted to again reiterate our strong opposition to this, um, development in the in the subdivision of that property.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Um, Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
Um, no, I think, uh, we'll go through the 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 process and and see what the ZBA says and then we'll come back and. Make you maybe make another presentation about why it's bad and maybe not.
Well, I think one of the issues that you need to address is that you are asserting that this is not. I mean, your neighbors, your residents have said, your clients have said that this is not. A subdivitable lot, um, for some reason and. You probably need to proceed with establishing that case on your own. If that's, that's what your assertion is, we would not make that decision, but you need to, that's a private matter and you would need to pursue that with Mr. Hegney.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then we'll see you. Once you've figured, once you've sorted that out. Um, okay, so unless, um, there are any, Mr. Hegney, I'm sorry, did you want to close?
Uh, no, I think you and Ms. DeLuca have summarized very clearly what the law is and.
Amazing.
For you to tell us to proceed to file so that we can address all the items that are necessary for this property.
We're just like stop clocks every now and then we nail one. Um, so, um, the, we'll see, we'll leave it open on this, has everybody agreed to leaving this application open, I assume, yes? No, I'm sorry, we're gonna, um, we're gonna close it and we'll move the preliminary, he's like, what, there she's gonna leave it open? Okay.
Just wanted to make sure I'm listening and I I am.
So, uh, I'm, um, we're gonna suggest that we close this application and that we move the preliminary to final. Um, so we'll need to discuss that, um. And the reason we would be doing this is because ZBA would need, needs to opine on these issues of the hardship. Um, the key issues that we've discussed in terms of our purview. Are, there is an open, there's an open question on the developability of the lot from the sewer department that will need to be addressed. Uh, but in terms of the subdivision itself, at this point, we've got just the open space question. And the applicant has agreed. To modify the open space pursuant to the request of the conservation department. Um, you might want to consider whether. Um, there's any, there's, as you work on the open space, whether there's anything that. Could enhance stormwater planting, because since you have to restore the open space. You might, I said it wrong, but you might want to do some deep rooted trees. Uh, that enhance stormwater retention, et cetera. Um, outside of that, um, if everybody, is everybody amenable to closing? If you object, please raise your hand. No objection.
Why are we, um, why are we closing instead of leaving it open?
Why are you, is that you, Mr. Martin, asking the question?
Yes, ma'am.
We would close it because the only way the ZBA can opine on the hardship is if. If we kick it over to them and the only way we can legally kick it over to them is by. By moving the preliminary, by making a decision on preliminary. Which is also really hard for us to do because it feels like we're approving a nonconformity. But we're not, we're just handing it over to the ZBA to make the decision. So, it always is, we always all kind of squirm a little bit when we do this part, so, um. But that's the way the law works, so if nobody objects, um, we'll close this item and we'll have a motion, Mr. McRae.
Uh, okay, uh, let's get this kite into the air and see what happens, um. This is, uh, one Meadowwood Drive application, PLPZ, twenty twenty three one three, preliminary subdivision. In the R twenty zone, applicants requested a division of, uh, one point two oh six acres. Um, into two lots, lot A would be thirty two thousand five hundred thirty three square feet, lot B would be twenty thousand five square feet. And a conservation easement of, uh, approximately seven thousand eight hundred or fifteen percent of the total parcel. Um. Commission finds that, uh, conservation issue comments on eleven twenty four twenty indicating concerns. On the proposed open space layout, uh, zoning issue comments on three nine, turning on indicating concerns with lot, uh, space. Uh, and frontage. Uh, DPW issued comments on, uh, eleven ten twenty detailing requirements needed for prior to, uh, a preliminary and final subdivision approval. Sewer division issued comments dated eleven nineteen twenty indicating concerns. Over the private use of the sewer line. And the wetlands agency issued a permit needs questionnaire dated, uh, ten twenty two twenty one. Indicating, uh, ten twenty one, twenty, excuse me, indicating no permit required. Therefore, motion to move the application to final subdivision, the applicant is to address the following. Uh, revision of the application and notices to reflect lot A being in the coastal overlay zone. Uh, address the conservation open space locations and remediation. Uh, zoning compliance and requested variances of setback, frontage, lot circle, et cetera. Uh, development and submittal of the required drainage report. Remediation of existing encroaches on lot town loan land. And the applicant to address any outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues. I believe that covers everything that we've talked about.
Luke, I do have a second.
Same.
Mr. Levy has seconded, Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also an aye, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much, everybody. And Mr. Martin, best of luck with all your research and we'll see y'all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next application is Darren and Marion Sloenekker and Peter and Lorraine Kelly. For an application, uh, to do a final resub, resubdivision at twelve Hillcrest Lane and One Old Farm Lane. Uh, who is representing the applicant?
I believe it's Mr. DeAndrea.
Okay, we have a.
Someone's raised their hand.
I think that's a member of the public. Mr. DeAndrea, if you are representing the applicant, would you kindly raise your hand? Um, hmm. Uh, I think he's just called Tony when he's at meetings, right? He's not in, I'm not seeing him at the meeting, are you sure it's Mr. DeAndrea?
Uh, I believe it's his plans on the, in the application.
Could be a telephone line?
No, oh, maybe. Um.
Um, should we ask this Lumina who she is, maybe it's?
No, yeah, Ottenman Kirby.
Kirby?
Yes.
Let's, let's click on this Mina that might be.
Must be on the wrong app, I'm sorry.
Hillcrest?
What, what page are we on here, three something?
Yeah, I'm looking at page three twenty seven, it's.
Okay, this person has their hand up and I think Katie's right, let's find out who this is.
Hello?
Evening, everyone. Hi, um, I apologize, my name is Christian from Ottenman Kirby. I'm representing the clients for, uh, one old farm in Hillcrest. I did not realize I'm using a different account, it should be, uh, it should be Ottenman Kirby on the name.
Yeah, because we were sure you were public, okay, um.
Yeah, I apologize.
All right, okay, so will you proceed? Uh, well, actually, we.
I'm sorry, can we just get your name again for the record?
Christian Fontanella. That should be letter K, um.
It's F as in Frank. Um, it's Christian.
Yes, K R I S T I A N.
T?
T I A N.
And your last name is Fontanella with two Ls?
Yes.
All right, you tell me if I got that wrong. There it is, does that, your name?
Uh, I actually cannot see, um, yes, uh, it should be letter I, Fontanella.
Okay, no worries. Um, all right, okay, Mr. Fontanella, now that we've gotten all the logistics out of the way, if you would, uh, proceed. Uh, we are aware that, uh, you're applying for a final resub for an equilary exchange of two thousand two hundred and twenty two feet.
That's correct.
If you would go ahead.
Yeah, um, again, uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Christian from Ottenman Kirby, um, I'm here to present that. Resubdivision plan of, uh, One Old Farm Lane and Twelve Hillcrest Lane. And, um, we saw the comments, our client has, uh. Addressed the comments, um, there's one comment that we received yesterday from Wetlands that we should submit a letter. Of agreement between the both parties. Um, our clients already saw that and they're working on it right now, but, uh, Bianca Diggert. Uh, sorry if I mispronounced that, but she said that we're gonna have to, uh, wait and.
Yes, so, yeah.
We're sorry you didn't get the message earlier in the day, but the bottom line is, we can't act on anything that the wetlands agency has not approved. If there's an open wetlands issue, we can't act on it, so we would have to leave your application open. Uh, if anybody on the commission has any issues on the application, we would tell you now, otherwise. Uh, we'll have to leave it open until we have wetlands sign off and then we would be able to decide on it. Uh, does anybody, uh, Mr. McRae, anybody have any concerns, questions on this application?
I do not.
Okey dokey, um, so there you go, Mr. Fontanella, now that I've got your name all nice, um.
Thank you very much.
Um, you can sign on with a good account next time and, uh, we're like, we just didn't know who this person was, we couldn't figure it out.
Okay, so, um.
The, um, so just, if you can just, as soon as you get the wetlands issue squared away, just, um, reach out to Bianca and ask her. To put you on the agenda.
Will do.
So we will be leaving this item open unless anyone objects. No, thank you very much, sir. All right, next one. Keith Koch, at ten South Crossway for a final coastal site plan. Uh, and this, folks, if, um. We do not decide it tonight, we would need an extension, um, who's representing the applicant? Mr. Hegney again?
Uh, yeah, I I hesitate now to say it because I was so confident with the last one.
Oh, wait, we've got the wrong Hegney here, so let's, we're gonna move one and up the other. Oh, you got him. Did you get the other Mr. Hegney in? Yes, yeah, you did, okay, he's good. Okay, hello, Mr. Hegney.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, uh, members of the commission, uh, uh. We are here, uh, to to hopefully wrap up, uh, the coastal site plan for ten South Crossway. Uh, I'm here in the audience this evening, we do have our property owner, Heath Koch. Our contractor, Beau Malpus from Warranton Homes. Our engineer, Len DeAndrea from Rocco V. DeAndrea. Our landscape architect, Life Yost from Yost Design. And our coastal engineer, Jill Pietra-Palo. Uh, we were last before you on February seventeenth. At that time, we had outstanding departmental comments. Uh, in that, in the interim, or since then, uh, we've gotten, uh, uh, comments and support, uh, from DPW, uh, DEP. And conservation, uh, in particular to address your new regulation, uh, six one eleven, uh, D, uh, regarding the coastal buffer planting. Um, uh, in the, since we have, uh, satisfied all the departmental comments, we believe we've, uh, uh, shown. That we demonstrate compliance with, uh, section six one eleven and section six one thirteen or section six thirteen. And so we'd asked, uh, for your approval. Uh, happy to field any questions, uh, from the commission, we do have our design team in the audience this evening as well.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Uh, any questions or comments from the commission? Well, I.
McRae.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Mr. Hegney? The conservation comments, is something you you in conservation have agreed on, that's all set, ready to go?
Yes, uh, we did take some time to. Yes, we did take some time to meet with an environmental analyst, Ms. Mock. In addition to making enhancements to the planting along the seawall, converting some of the lawn space that we had previously designated to planting beds, and calling out for some soil remediation post-construction, we were able to get her support on this project. In addition to all of that, we were able to support one of Conservation's efforts over at Greenwich Point by locating a Gourd Purple Martin complex. It's a large bird home that Conservation is trying to facilitate the habitat for out at Greenwich Point, and we're able to expand those efforts on our property.
Okay.
There should, there are updated comments from Conservation dated March 11th in our folder.
Got them. Gourd Purple Martin, Purple Martin is the bird?
Yes.
The Purple Martin is the bird. It's, it's a large birdhouse. It's a project that Conservation has been working on at Greenwich Point.
It's, think, think about swallows. It looked like a swallow.
Okay, that's, I, bird boxes, you know, what was it? The bat box thing we did years ago? Okay.
Not so long ago when we did the bat box. We've done it.
What color is it?
And then there was the slimy salamanders that were endangered.
Yeah, we're not going there either.
And there was a tree frog too. We've saved them. We, we work on those guys. Okey dokey. Anybody have any questions? Well, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Please raise your hand or make noise. Okey doke, then, Mr. McRae, if you are in a position to make a motion, we'd love to have one.
I'm in a position, all right. Where are we here? 10 South Crossway?
Yes, sir.
Application, PLPZ 2023-77 for final coastal site plan. Applicants seeking approval to demolish an existing residence and construct a new single-family dwelling, accessory buildings, pool patio areas, new driveway, new dock and related site improvements in the R20 coastal overlay zone. Whereas this subject property straddles the AE13 and VE16 flood zones and has direct frontage on Greenwich Cove. Whoops, the commission finds that zoning issue comments on to 10/21 indicating proposal meets the requirements of the BZR and endorse the project for zoning permit. Sewer issued comments on 3/11/21 indicating that issues to be addressed during P&amp;C commission phase, review phase. Engineering issue comments on 3/4/21 indicating engineering concerns can be addressed prior to zoning permit sign off. Conservation issue comments 3/11/21 indicating notes to be added to the final plan. Deep issue comments on 3/2/21 indicating concerns have been addressed and has no additional comment. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on 12/30/20 indicating no permit required. Therefore, motion to approve the final plan with the following comments. Applicants agreed to the conservation notes in the memo dated 3/10/21 to be added to the plans. Notes concerning planning bed enhancement, converting lawn to planting beds, post-construction mediation, installation of a birdhouse, and plan for maintaining logs organically, and the applicant shall address any and all other remaining staffer interdepartmental issues. And that's my motion.
Okey dokey, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Levy's got them all tonight. Mr. Levy has seconded the motion. How do you vote, Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
Mr. Levy? What? Somebody say something? No? Oh, Mr. Levy?
Aye.
I, Albin is also aye. The motion passes five, nothing. And so we move on to the next application, which is Patricia Galego Barracat at 675 Steamboat Road for a final coastal site plan. And representing the applicant is not Mr. Hegney, correct?
Madam Chair, I have this one as well.
Oh, you do have this one as well. So-
I'd ask that you and Pat not kick me out yet.
We were looking forward, no. So, Mr. Hegney-
I saw Pat's itchy trigger finger there, you know?
Yeah, you saw the twinkle, you saw the twinkle in his eyes. He loves throwing people out of meetings. We saw, we saw an email today that your applicant's doc was approved.
Yes, we're hoping to continue the luck streak and hopefully have more approvals in our near future. DEP did sign off on our 440 dock application earlier today. Similarly, this is the second time you're, you're seeing this application. We did meet with you at the beginning of the month. At that time, we were not ready to demonstrate compliance with the coastal site plan standards, and we believe we are in a position to do that now. We did get a chance to meet with Conservation Director Pat Sesto on this project. We did make a courting improvements. Our landscape architect, Kate Throck Morton, is in the audience this evening from Environmental Land Solutions, along with our architect, Paul Harris from Cole Harris Architects. In the event that you have any questions of them. Our CLOMAR is still under review by FEMA. However, our coastal engineers at Race Azure D Slicer is working on it and is confident that we'll have that in hand in the near future. We'd ask that the commission consider approving our application this evening, subject to receiving the CLOMAR before the zoning permit sign off is released for this project. We have nothing further, but as I mentioned, our, our design team is in the audience this evening in the event that the commission has any questions.
Yes, I believe you still have some outstanding, an outstanding question from Conservation, correct?
I, I believe Director Sesto's comments were very complimentary.
All right, why?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I think it came in separately, but Mr. Hegney-
Separately, yes.
I believe our planner may be doing more important things at the end of last week than updating her staff report.
No, actually, she did send it in.
I did see that. I was, I was impressed that she was able to get that done.
We won't tell you the, okay, we won't give you the backstory. Go ahead.
Yeah, they were, let's see, March 12th, right, from, directly from Mrs. Sesto?
Yes.
Okay. CLOMAR, CLOMAR, where is the CLOMAR? Do you have any estimate on the timing?
We believe, we've been having a continuing back and forth with the FEMA staff. We did submit revisions to them on February 26th. We have been in touch with them again this week. It is a process that takes time, just like any other permitting process, but we are confident that it is something that will be released, mostly due to the nature of the comments we've been receiving from FEMA.
Okay, none of those comments are pretty boilerplate?
I would say that when, when speaking with Azure D Slicer, our coastal engineer, she gave me every, every confidence that this would be taken care of.
Great, okay, thank you.
Do we have anything else?
I'm done.
We do have Race in the audience this evening. If you'd like to refer the questions to them, Mr. McRae.
Well, I think what it is, is that everybody says we're okay subject to the CLOMAR, so I think everything is subject to the CLOMAR. It would seem to me that either way, you can't move forward without that having, happening, so.
And how do we exactly word that on the CLOMAR? I always forget. It's prior to subject to-
We would want- Except, yeah, the accepted prior acceptance prior to zoning permit and then the CLOMAR would have to be executed and acceptable to the, to FEMA prior to CO, you know, which is post-construction work.
As the commission may know, the zoning enforcement officer has to sign off on any CLOMAR application that goes into FEMA when it's applied for. Obviously, this plan will change significantly if FEMA does not grant us an approval, and we would need to return to you for a different-
Yeah, and I think we might also note that, I think, you know, one of the issues is you made Sewer Department quite nervous. So we, you, because of the fact that it looked like it was a slab, but it wasn't, and then you've, Dave, have you met with them since the last time we saw you?
We have not met with them, but we did submit a response package. Rightfully raised those concerns. Luckily, our design team had anticipated that. Our CLOMAR will remove the house from the flood zone and eliminate our need to comply with the flood zone requirements. It will permit us to maintain a basement and bathroom in the basement. And our architect team has put together designs, including check valves and pumps, to ensure that the black, the backflow issues that Sewer is rightfully concerned about won't be a problem at this property.
Okay, right, they seem to be okay subject to the CLOMAR like everybody else during P&amp;Z phase. And then the Sewer Permit Phase, which they're, you know, that's where the technical aspect will come in, and that's, that's a whole different barrel of monkeys.
We have been working with the Sewer Department on that. We'll continue to do so.
Okay. All right, anybody got any further comments on this? No, okey doke. So, um, proposing we close it, does anybody object to close? Oh, a public comment. Does anybody from the public have any comment on this application? Please raise your virtual hand if you wish to comment. No, okay. So proposing to close it, please advise if you have any objection to closing. Seeing no objection, entertain a motion, Mr. McRae.
Okay, 675 Steamboat Road, application PLPZ 2021-14, final coastal site plan, applicants seeking approval to demolish an existing residence, construct new single-family dwelling, pad, pool patio area, dock and related site improvements in the R6 and COZ zones. Whereas this subject property straddles the XAE13 and VE15 flood zone and has direct frontage on Smith Cove. Then the applicant has filed for a conditional letter of map provision flood with FEMA. Commission finds that zoning issue comments on 2/24/21 indicating their proposal meets the requirements of the BZR subject to the CLOMARF being granted. Sewer issued comments dated, double check that, 3/12/21 indicating site concerns have been addressed and is subject to the CLOMARF being granted. Engineering issue comments, 2/22/20 indicating engineering concerns can be addressed prior to zoning permit sign off. Conservation issue comments dated 3/12/20 indicating site concerns have been addressed. And deep issue comments dated 3/21 indicating concerns have been addressed subject to the CLOMAR being granted. Therefore, motion to approve the final site plan and dock with the following comments, and this is where we, Mr. LaRoe, you should, should work on this too. The approval is subject to the CLOMARF being granted. That's the first. And then evidence of the CLOMARF approval shall be included with the required zoning permit sign off documents, middle documents? Or do we need that at the, prior to the zoning permit sign off or at the-
Zoning permit. They have to have it. Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair, go ahead.
No, Pat, you go.
They, they need it for zoning permit and they, zoning permit needs us, so it should be given to us to be packaged together with the zoning permit.
Okay, so if they need, they need to give you the zoning permit at the zoning permit sign off, okay. Question came in my mind that if they don't receive it, are we gonna be discussing that or should we include that? What happens if they don't?
It doesn't need to be discussed because if they don't move the line, then the whole building has to be revised and then the plan comes back to us.
Okay, so we can get rid of that, okay. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer interdepartmental issues. And that's what I got.
That's your last sentence usually. Okey dokey, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Levy's got them all tonight. Okay, Mr. Levy has seconded, and with that, Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
I mean, I-
It's confusing sometimes. And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we can make a decision that is more important. It is now 7:15 PM. Do you guys want to do the first application in the public hearing? We have four applications left tonight. One of them will be combined, the two of them will be combined. Do you want to take a 15-minute break and reconvene at 7:30, or do you want to do the first one? First 15-minute break? See you guys at 7:30. Mr. Bazili, I'll see you at 7:30 when we open the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, John.
Hi, Dave D, who are you? You're muted. Would you just-
Yes. S.O. armed.
Okey dokey, we are all set. Glad we asked you.
All set.
Hold on. Oh, there's Mr. Levy, yes. All right, okey dokey. So now we're opening the public hearing. Mr. Bazili is ready. Why am I not seeing him? Oh, there he is. Okay, hello, Mr. Bazili. We now go to the public hearing. Our first application is number seven, the Town of Greenwich, final site plan and special permit for demolition and reconstruction of the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center at 90 Harding Road in the R7. Who will be speaking for the applicant? Is that you, Mr. Minelli?
Yeah, I'll be starting off. So, good evening, everybody. Alan Minelli, Superintendent Building Construction and Maintenance, Department of Public Works. Patrick, could you bring up, you have the drawings there, C1.10? Since we, since the commission has granted the preliminary site plan, we've been pretty busy. We've incorporated all your comments and changes from the preliminary site plan approval, and we've been back to the ARC several times. I just want to start off by saying, no changes to the buildings, footprint, shape or size have been made. It is the way you looked at it at the preliminary. The P&amp;C site data has not been altered since the preliminary. The only thing that I do want to comment on is the parking count did decrease by three spaces. If you recall, we have a new side lot around the side of the building and the Harding Road lot, through the conforming, making the spaces conforming and adjusting the entrances and exits, we lost three spaces, so we have a total of 217. It's, I think it's C1.10, Patrick.
I'm sorry, 1.1?
1 point, C1.10, there you go.
Thank you.
So, the, the biggest changes to the site plan that were commenced by the ARC and, and actually you guys brought them up too, with the help from the Greenwich Engineering Department, I want to bring your attention to the drive loop exit. The drive loop exit now is in alignment with the entrance and exit to the Harding Road parking lot. And there's a crosswalk to the north. This is a much safer way to get people out of the parking lot on Harding Road and across to the Civic Center. Everybody will be in a vision, in view of cars. The cars will see the pedestrians and pedestrians will see the cars. The other item I want to bring in attention to is the loop entrance further down on Tomac where the Tomac and Forest meet Harding Road. There, there is one entranceway now before there used to be two. You'll drive in from, I guess, Tomac, taking a right, and either you make a decision to go to the side parking lot, which does have a loop at the end that'll take a fire truck, or you go to the drop-off loop to the left. When you're leaving the side parking lot, you can only exit back onto Harding Road. You can't go into the loop. The other alignment was the front of the building. We straightened out the path from the Harding Road lot to the front entranceway, giving it more, a more grand feel. These are all raised crosswalks. And we've also promoted the crosswalk from the railroad parking lot down on, that's over by the Viaduct on Tomac, onto the property and into the front door. The landscaping all conforms- The li, the landscaping all conforms to A R C suggestions. As does the trees, um, uh, our tree warden, uh, Greg, uh, Kramer. Made some comments on, uh, tree selections and what trees go and come, and we've, uh, totally conformed and incorporated that into the plan that we have tonight. Uh, the site fencing, which was another big discussion. Um, we have site fencing. We've, we've decided on a wood, a square post, three rail wood fence. That will, uh, wrap the Harding Road parking lot. As well as separate the town property from the Metro North property on the south, southern boundary. Um, there are P V, um. Um, car charges that have been incorporated also into the site plan and they'll be located, uh, on the south side of the building. Uh, the biggest change to the building that we've seen, that you guys will have seen now is. Uh, with some suggestions from the A R C, we've gone to a. New building roof material that was different from what we proposed originally. It's now going to be changed to a zinc panel roof. And that will readily accept, uh, future solar panels. Uh, the one thing that we weren't able to conclude. Um, I'll blame it on COVID. Um, we need to do some, uh, the architect and A R C wanted to have. Some real life samples of the masonry that'll be used on the new building. Uh, we were not able to coordinate that in sufficient amount of time. And, um. The A R C has granted us, uh, uh, approval. And they just want to come back and look at the, the range of colors of the brick that the architect selected along with the grout. Um, we are right in the middle of trying to get the masonry units, um, to Greenwich and we'll be assembling them at the site. And I'll be, uh, contacting, um. The A R C when those are prepared and they'll, they'll pass judgment on it. And. Um, I think that's it. All the other smaller items that everybody's asked us about, we've in, we either, um. Sufficiently, uh, explain them. Or they have been incorporated into plans. And I'll take any questions. We do have, uh, Joseph Leano here tonight. I have T S K P, who's the architect. That team, and we also have, like I said, S L R.
Uh, Mister Minelli, I, I have some. Comments, then, uh, maybe you can. Help me with some of these things. So, uh, the parking lot behind the existing building is. Uh, has, is. No longer there.
Correct.
And so now you're just putting some on the side. So what is going on in that space? I don't, is it just open?
It's an open, it's open grass space.
Okay. So, um. And the courts remain.
The courts are the courts that are there today. Yes.
No. Uh, did you consider putting in an extra court?
Uh, no, um, this was something that we decided, the, the committee decided early on. To try to save some money was, um. To, um, keep, retain the existing lit court. Um, the other thing too is we do have issues with, uh, site, um, stormwater. And, uh, having any other, um. Uh, impervious pavement is just going to add to. Um, other issues.
I suppose you could always add one now, I guess.
Well, I don't know if you can or you can't.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I'm just curious. Now, can you explain that the traffic pattern going? Uh, around and behind the building to the circle? Uh, because it's now a, a three-way intersection. So I'm not sure I understand. Uh, I don't. Without really understanding it, looks like it could be a bottleneck and I just don't, uh. I'd just like you to talk me through it.
Well, there's always, currently there is a right-hand turn off at Tomac into the, um. Uh, into this current civic center's. Uh, back parking lot that you just mentioned where the tennis courts are, and that's separate from the loop. So we not only have, um, one entrance is we're now, we've now reduced that to one entrance. Um. Currently you have two, which is, which makes it really confusing. Um, we've just basically moved the parking from the tennis courts, as you. Uh, noticed to the side yard. And, um, created one way in. To the loop, the drop off loop or into that side yard.
Well, I'm concerned, concerned about, um, the, the entrance. Into that because now it's, there's going to be a lot more cars using that one entrance. So.
Um, right. So the cars, if there's, if, so if you're, if you're speaking of cars. Looking for a place to park and there's no parking, they are able to turn in the loop and drive back out to Harding Road. Make a right on, um, at the intersection and go into the main lot. They can't just turn into the drop off loop. So there'll be sufficient signage directing people to the drop off loop or to parking.
I see. So, but, uh, by, uh, there's. Um, if you're. Coming down forest and then you want to, uh, turn into. Uh, the property. Um, what if there's? You know, what if there's a line there? Uh, already, you know, already backed up, uh, trying to turn in. Um. Do they go to the loop or, 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 um, the drop off?
Well, either, either you pull over on Forest and wait for the line to, um, lessen, or you drive down Tomac and turn around the golf course and come back the other way. I mean, you would do that at any, at any intersection, you wouldn't block the intersection. You don't do that on the post road at Whole Foods.
Uh, does it, what about a traffic light there? Do we, is there something that could, you know? Organize that a little bit better?
That's not going to, the traffic light is not going to rectify that issue.
Okay, uh, would, would, um, I, I don't know if there's a real problem. It just looks a little messy to me the way, because I, I, I don't have much information on it. Um, uh, if, if you had an event there. Uh, would, would you have a, um, traffic? Um, officer there?
Um, I can't answer that question. Um, Joe, if Joe's there, do you guys normally have, um? Traffic officers if there's a major event at the civic center, Joe?
Yes, we, if, depending on the size of the event and the duration. Uh, we do require the, uh, sponsors to provide a traffic control and crosswalk control. So, um, this would be the same case going forward. We'd evaluate the size of the event. And the number of people coming over a period of time and decide. That, uh, we would require them to have a police officer, at least one. And possibly two, if, if, you know, if there is backup in the main lot, uh, to, uh, oversee the traffic flow.
So. Um.
One, one more comment, one more comment about that. When you're coming down Forest, if you're looking to pull in along the south side of the building. There's a stop sign there at Forest. If you see that backup, you can always just take a left and go to the main lot. So, you know, you'd be able, it's visible right from these Forest Avenue intersection. There, so that you would not have to, you know, wait queue in line. I mean, obviously you'd see it. You take a left, go into the main lot and, uh, try to achieve a parking space there. So there are some options here other than waiting in line or going down Tomac and turning around. Um, it's a vis, visually, visually you can see it and make that, uh, decision.
Okay, perfect. Thank, thank you for that. So at, given that. Um. What if there is a line that of, you know, several cars trying to turn in there? And somebody's on Forest trying to make a left. Um. You.
It, it's offset, it's offset enough so that, that, you know. You should be able, you should be able to visually see it from the intersection of Forest and make that left. And.
So you don't, so in other words, there, there wouldn't be cars blocking that intersection, trying to make a left into the property.
There should not be. I mean, and if we, if the, if the event is that big, that large scale. That's the perfect place to put a police officer to direct the traffic. Either to go into the south side lot or to go left down to the main entrance, the, the main lot and it's, and look for parking.
So th, this is my, I want to get to, so the point is that where it was before. Where the entrance was before for the loop. Um. You obviously made a decision to put the single entrance over here. But what, uh, explain to me. If it's not as good to put, keep the original entrance where the loop is and then just make. Uh, the, 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 um. Uh, turn off to the right to go around the building kind of thing instead of going. So it'd be more circuitous to get to the, the, the circle in the back. But you wouldn't be dealing with the intersection of Forest and Tomac. Does that?
Uh, that does, uh. I'm not following you, but I can tell you that this was highly debated at A R C. And this is where the outcome of putting a single entry went, came from, uh. I, I, you know, they, this is a suggestion on their behalf to try to condense this. Uh, make it, make it simple so that there'd be one driveway in, one, one way out. And you could not go down to the end of the loop. Turn around and go back in front of the building to the drop off area. You'd have to exit. To Harding and Tomac. I mean, yeah, I guess that's Harding and Tomac. I'm sorry. So.
The, the focus, the focus at the A R C wasn't so much. Vehicle or traffic. It was more pedestrian safety.
Right.
About pedestrian safety.
I'm just curious if there, if there's any kind of discussion, you know, uh, if, if, if this was a, a better way to. Uh, uh, direct traffic as opposed to keeping the other entrance and getting rid of. The one that you have.
Originally, that's how we had drawn it and that's where this discussion all started. Back in October. And this is what, this is now what is, it has come to.
I mean, it is, uh, uh, and, uh, looking at it in plan, it looks very, um, linear and, and well organized. It's just that I'm just kind of concerned that having, uh, creating a kind of awkward. Uh. Intersection with, you know, uh, that, you know, there's a kind, there's kind of four roads now. Uh, but they're off-centered and, you know, and, and, um. It looks a little messy to me, that's all, because it's a two-way out. Or is it, um, is it two-way out?
No, from the side, from the, from the.
Two-way in and out.
It's a, it's a, it's a one-way out.
No, it's two, I mean, it's a two-way street. That is what I mean.
You could come in or you go out.
Right.
And you're, and you're queuing up, you're queuing up back by the handicap space. There's another stop sign there. So what you're doing is you're letting people, you're letting cars come in into the dry, into the drop off loop. Before you could proceed out.
Right. And, and you know, so, so you, you're, um. Uh, this, i- i- if this were, um, England. Uh, maybe the circulation pattern would even be easier. Uh, because you'd enter on the left side, go around the loop or go straight. And then you, you could end, you could leave on, uh, go on, uh, your left-hand side. And the traffic would not cross internally to, uh, the site. That would be kind of like a better traffic pattern internally.
Um, Mister Levy, I think actually one of the interesting things about this, uh, the traffic pattern is that. Uh, it would seem that actually most of the users, end users of the building. Would actually park across the street in a larger lot because that's really directly and closely connected to the front door.
Yes.
The side, the side parking lot. Um, although it's connected to the front door. Uh, there's really no significant entrance there. It's the loading dock, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So. Um, my assumption would be that this lot would be, uh, employees. Um, you know, that kind of thing, and that the major entrance. Is served by the parking lot across the street. So I think there's the, the, the conflicts or any perceived conflicts there. At Forest and Tomac in this driveway probably will be minimum.
Okay. But if I go to use the tennis courts. And there's an event and I have, you know, I could have quite a bit of trouble getting out of the site. Um. With, you know, so anyway, uh, just. Curious, um, about the change. But thank you.
Okay.
Uh, um, uh, Mister Minelli, uh, just a quick question. Uh, conservation had asked about, uh. Uh, the E V chargers, uh, being, having them pushed back into that parking lot. Uh, so they're not, uh, you know, uh, abused by people who actually don't have electric vehicles. Is that a, a possibility in terms of the functionality and cabling back into the building?
Nick, I, I didn't hear that first part of that question.
Uh, conservation asked about, uh, if it's a possibility to move the electric vehicle chargers. Back into that parking lot or deeper into the parking lot. So. Uh, uh, people who have, uh, you know, uh, non-electric vehicles. Don't just go and park there, you know, willy-nilly. Um, you know, make, make them, I think actually their words were make them inconvenient to people with non, uh, electric vehicles.
So are you saying to move them into which parking lot? The main parking lot?
No, 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 no. The, the same parking lot where they are, but, uh, just deeper in towards the, uh, the turnaround in the back. I'm just wondering if that's even a possibility based on its relation, their relationship to the building.
Um, actually, this is probably the best location for them. Um. They, they, uh, they do take, um, forty amps power each. Um, and communication wires. So. Putting them deeper, um. Or on opposite side of the parking, it would just increase the conduit lengths.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It's also, if there's any building lighting, it, they'll be more visible against the building.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Wow. Uh, if we have a pause then and what everybody's saying, um. How would you guys feel if we look to see if we have some public comment on this? And if anybody in the public wishes to raise their hand, please give us. A virtual. Virtual hand up. Nope. Okay. No comments from the public. Are we comfortable with this application at this point? Does anybody have any further comments on where it stands?
No.
No further comments. Um, would you all be amenable to closing it and deciding it? Please advise if you oppose that suggestion. Mister Yesky? I see. You're opposed?
No, I.
You're in favor. Okay. Everyone is in favor of closing this application and. In that case, uh, we will close. The application at this time. Uh, thank you very much, gentlemen. It was nice seeing everybody, the whole team. Thank you very much for all the work. Um, we've got a ways to go, but hey, you're home, right? You can all tune in. Our next application is Paradigm forty-four forty-eight. Uh, for a final site plan and special permit at that address on West Putnam Avenue. In the CGBR and CGIO zones. Okay. And who will be representing the applicant? I believe it's Mister Hasland. Is he here? Mister Hasland, if you would raise your hand, I'm not, there you are. I see you. No worries. Okie dokie. So here comes Mister Hasland. Oh, Mister, Mister Siciliano, would you like to stay for this or shall I send you home? I'm sending you home. Uh, hello, Mister Hasland. Uh, you still have that big pile on your desk waiting for your attention.
I'm trying to work through it.
So Mister Hasland, um, I'm going to let the commission start this conversation. Uh, the folks who were on the site walk that I missed because they had lots of observations and comments and I'm going to. Let them start talking and then do you have a presentation that you want to give? Or do you want to wait till they throw out their questions after the sidewalk?
Um, well, yes, we did have a presentation we wanted to give, but if, uh, we'll defer to the chair as how you want to run them, this, uh, part of the meeting.
Um, okay. If you want to keep it short, the.
Can we do the, uh, presentation first and then questions later?
Mister Hasland, if you would, if you would go ahead with the application. In the meantime. I'm just letting you know, Mister Leroy, that when he's done with his application. You've got in the one drive, you've got the photos that, um, staff took. On the site walk and we could share those with the public at the appropriate time. So everybody's kind of on the same page. Okay. And we can, all right. So Mister Hasland, the vote is to let you go first.
Good. Thank you. Now, good evening and ship hasle for the applicant. Um, with me tonight is Marcy Fagan, who's the owner of the building under, uh, name forty-four through forty-eight. Paradigm forty-four through forty-eight, West Putnam Avenue. Rich Granoff of Granoff Architects as architect, along with Andreas Streusman. Who's also a principal at, uh, Granoff Architects. Um, I realized that you, you folks, uh, know something about this property now, having, uh, seen us in the pre-app. And having done an inspection the other day and, and having the benefit of all the various materials. That, uh, we filed with you, but I thought I'd just briefly, uh, for the public's sake, explain. Uh, what the building is and what the project involves if I'm that. Uh, the, the building was originally constructed in nineteen twenty-nine, uh, to be a theater, having both, uh, film. Or moving pictures and vaudeville acts, um, and opened in late.
or moving pictures and vaudeville acts. Um, it opened in late 1929 and had somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 seats, which you can imagine was, uh, quite, uh, uh, quite a lot, lot of brouhaha when it was first opened because of excitement, I should say. It's one of the largest theaters in New England and, um, uh, some of them, I guess, one of the commission members actually had attended a movie theater when it was still open. Um, but it, it was transformed from a movie theater to a bowling alley in 1959. Uh, some of the original Spanish motifs that had been the, like in the marquee on West Putnam Avenue, as well as, uh, walking in the lobby to the main theater, uh, were lost at that time. Um, but there had been a, a theme to the movie theater. It's called an atmospheric theater. Because of that, when you went in, you felt like you were actually in a Spanish village or, or town, as Mr. Low can, uh, possibly attest to. Um, when it was converted to a movie, to a bowling alley, rather, in the late 1950s, uh, it had, according to the, uh, billboard, which was outside the theater, 56 lanes. I think there are 50 lanes most recently. I'm not sure what happened to the other six or so, but, uh, it, uh, operated as a bowling alley until, uh, about 1995, when Marcy bought the property and converted it to what you see today. Um, at the time that, uh, Marcy converted it to the retail and office use, the commission noted that, uh, there was insufficient parking, um, for additional uses at that time, even though, uh, there had been no, uh, additional parking back at the time when it opened as a 2,000 plus movie theater in 1929. Uh, and even though there's no additional parking when it opened up as a, as a bowling alley, which was very popular and, uh, and occasioned a lot of, of traffic. So at that time, she mothballed a considerable amount of space up on the second floor of the, uh, former bowling alley. Uh, and it stayed that way until, uh, the, the present day. Um, and you could all saw, several of you saw that the other night or the other, yeah, afternoon when we walked through. She had, uh, both in 1995, when Marcy came in with her plan, the, uh, commission had, uh, asked her if she would consider possibly doing something about housing at that time. Um, but that, it didn't happen, uh, came up again later on. So in 2006, she made an application to have eight units within this, uh, space. Uh, so D mothballed basically, uh, and, uh, with a parking garage below the existing parking garage. So it was going to require considerable excavation and then exit out, uh, to Lewis Street from the rear behind the various restaurants, et cetera. And, uh, that was not constructed. 2008 came along with all of its ills. And also Marcy's always been, uh, concerned about, uh, the, the building, its structure, if she were to excavate down as well as other environmental concerns. And, uh, the access to Lewis Street wasn't the best either. So when we came before you in 2019, uh, for a request to, uh, allow an office use on the mezzanine, um, section of the building, once again, you mentioned to us, had we considered possibly doing housing, uh, up on the mothballed area. And again, we indicated that the issue was really parking and we had to resolve that. And that hadn't been satisfactorily resolved. So Marcy met with, uh, Granoff Architects again and discussed what, uh, options there were. And, uh, they came up with this concept of having a car lift, uh, in the existing garage, which would take tenants' cars up to the second floor and there'd be a garage by which, uh, around it would be these apartments. And again, another floor above that with additional apartments. So the plan is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, um, has very little changes to the exterior of the, of the building other than to add, uh, windows and, uh, uh, small balconies up in the third floor and add larger windows on the second floor. Um, and a entryway, uh, adjacent to the existing garage on the first floor. So that's what's proposed. And, uh, and then we had a walk through the other day, and, and I think the commissioners, as you indicated in the briefing yesterday, had some issues you wanted, uh, us to address. But before I start to address those, I thought I'd have Rich Granoff, uh, run through the architectural plans. And also we gave you some sectionals the other day at Mr. McRice's request, so you can better understand exactly how these units would fit in to the existing building.
Perfect. How would you feel if, Pat, is this convenient for you to load first the as-is photos real quick, run them through? I don't know how many. I ended up only looking a little bit. Um, or do you want to do your, the, the plans? How do you guys want to do it?
Well, we could show the existing building with the photograph on the outside first, at least the public understands what we're talking about.
Perfect.
I, I sent you some additional information of historic nature, which I don't think we need to share with you on the Zoom meeting. You can enjoy it as you might wish to, uh, in your private time. Uh, but if you could show that, Pat, and then that gives everybody a sense of what we're talking about. And then I think if we could go to Rich Granoff's, uh, plans, uh, and have Rich and Andreas, uh, uh, address those, starting from the first sheet. It's a considerable package, I realize. So difficult to find everything.
I think I'm just gonna go chip with the pictures we took yes, the other day, because they, we have the exterior on it and we'll just walk through those.
That's fine, Pat. Thanks. Yep. If that's easier.
Then, uh, we can go to the plans and then we don't have to jump around too many files.
Were you able, you got the sections? I asked Peter to put those in the, in the deck too. Uh, I don't know where they are in the deck because it wasn't posted on the.
Uh, I don't see them in the folder right now, so I'm gonna have to, I'll, I'll, I'll search for it as I, I comb through these photos here.
Okay. Cause I know that was a concern of Mr. McRice in particular. Well, that's not the best picture to start with.
Uh, this is, yeah, obviously we'll, we'll, we'll go to the, uh, the better ones.
They want people to see something pretty first.
So, uh, I just saw the, the, sorry, it was, I had it queued up and then it went back to zero here. So, um, there we go.
Thank you. So this is the existing, uh, when Marcy bought the property in 1995, this was just a solid wall other than the entryway to the bowling alley, uh, painted white. And, uh, she put in with, uh, Fred Masoli was the architect at that time. And they put in the second floor, uh, windows, um, with the curved top and the, uh, the doorways and windows below that too, also with that accent. Um, and obviously the wall and the garage went in as well beneath the building. And, uh, it's tough because you really can't see the, the roof from this angle, but, uh, uh, you can see elements of the roof, which will encapsulate some of the, uh, third floor windows and, and, uh, patios.
Yeah, let me get to some of the interior. There's some pretty spectacular shots here that, um, sort of give the breadth.
That's probably the best shot right there, Pat, because in this scene, you're, you're looking down where you would have entered into the theater. Uh, this is the floor that's been put in later. Uh, obviously the theater would have had probably a slanted floor going down uh, to the stage. That's the stage that you actually see, uh, at the very end, at least part of it. Uh, because the floor came in, it covered over some of that, that staging area. And above it, uh, is a presidium. I think that's the right, uh, word. And, and my architects will correct me if it's not. But basically where they could lower down scenes, et cetera, uh, for the various acts that were on stage. So it goes up uh, through the, through the roof on that, that end. Um, and this space would basically, again, there'd be two floors. Then here, the first floor would have parking in the middle and apartments around it. The second floor would have, uh, just apartments in that area, which is the presidium would also have, uh, a couple of apartments as well. The rafters that you see, uh, I don't know great detail with the architects speak, but, uh, those are the original rafters. Uh, those would, uh, would remain and the units would be built around them and the sections, hopefully that you have, Pat. Uh, uh, address and Rich can explain to you how they're going to fit into the, uh, to those existing, uh, uh, rafters. Um, and those windows would be to the right or not original, as I said, and maybe changed out. So that gives you an idea of the space. It's considerable. And the, uh, I should say too, that the HVAC, uh, units would, are now, are much smaller than they, uh, were when Marcy put these in. So we would change these out and have smaller units that'd be underneath the floor. This is looking backwards. That was looking back just to the entryway where you come in, uh, right here. Yep. So it gives you an idea of the space. It's, it's, it's quite voluminous.
It's amazing. Go ahead. Very large. Okay.
Okay.
And now you were gonna see what Mr. Granoff has designed.
Yes, I think Rich Granoff, uh, Rich, if you want to join us and, and just go through your, your plans and the concept. He's, I think, out west skiing, but he had planned it. He told me he was on.
Okay.
Do you see him, Madam Chair?
Nope. When he, yes, I see him. He's got his hand up. We need to just get him in.
Oh, I just didn't see where that hand was. Okeydoke. No, that's Mr. Manelli. Um, did you find him?
Yeah, I've got him.
I'm not seeing the hand for some reason.
I put him in.
Okeydokey. Awesome.
He's muted. Richard's muted.
I'm good.
Granoff, hello. Oh, look at you. You've got, you've got, what's that called? Hat head. Sorry.
Helmet head.
Hat head. Helmet head. Oh, it's helmets these days. Yeah. Okeydokey. So, Mr. Granoff, would you like to talk about architecture instead of hats?
I would love to talk about architecture. If someone could put the plans up on the screen.
Uh, do you want the section drawings that Mr., uh, Haslam was talking about?
Uh, yeah, just if you could, the plans are enough.
Floor plans. Yep. Yes, I'll, I'll quickly take you through the floor plans and, um, then we'll go to the sections. Elevations.
There you go.
Elevations first, that were.
Uh, I think, I think let's go through the plans first.
Okay.
Yep, that's, let's start with the overall site plan.
Okay.
Okay. So as you are all well aware, um, the, is existing parking lot out front, which is basically for the use of the retailers. And that, we're not touching that. That's remaining as is. Um, next slide, please. And then there's also an existing, um, actually go to the next slide. Sorry. One more.
What am I looking at here? This, is this the old set?
Uh-oh, it's the wrong building. You're gonna have to resign.
This is, this is a 16-year-old set of drawings. I don't know why.
Yeah. What, so do you want the proposed set, right?
We want the proposed set, uh, for 2021.
Not to worry. We got all these, uh, plans just to confuse us.
Um, so, so do I in my hard drive.
It's keeping us alert.
I want to make sure you're paying attention. We like that. I can tell because it's the old Granoff Architects logo on the plans.
This is not the plan set that is going forth?
This is not. This is the 2006 plan set, Pat. So I, I think staff put this in, um, this background information for you.
You can tell because there's no parking on the second floor.
I think, uh, I think the file's name is, uh, 48 WPA P&amp;Z submission. You digging this out of the OneDrive?
Uh, I was digging it out of the full agenda, but now I'll be digging it out of there.
Uh, you, you keep going. It, you'll come to it. It, you'll come to it.
Oh, yes. Way at the end.
Oh, it's at the end of that section there? Is that, I just was.
Uh, Patrick, in the OneDrive, it's, uh, the sixth one down. Yeah, under the, in the application folder.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. We have the new Granoff Architects logo, so I think we're in 2021. There we go.
Great.
Sorry, it's, there's like a.
No problem.
A vertical orientation on this here. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is fine. Keep back up a couple of slides and I'll, uh, quickly go through this. Okay. Forward one, please. Okay. So, uh, overall site plan, as I said, um, to the lower part of the page is the existing parking lot for, uh, for retail. And then there is, uh, an existing indoor, uh, parking garage. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay. So we're proposing, um, sorry, nope.
I'm sorry. Did you say, I think you wanted to go to number five. I'm sorry.
You can just back up a couple, Pat. Um, yeah, then we're right there for now. So the existing indoor garage, um, we are actually taking one parking space and adding a residential, uh, vehicle elevator. Um, which we've done a lot of research on and have found a few companies that make really nice units that are user-friendly. And, uh, if you are going home to your apartment, you pull into this garage and into that elevator. And if you were a resident, you'd have a, um, a button in your, in your car, a remote to, uh, operate the unit and take you up to the second floor. The other thing I want to point, point out is in the lower right is a new, uh, residential entrance to the building. So if you were getting, uh, dropped off or taking an Uber, uh, the point on the lower right of the screen there is where you would, uh, walk down a covered, uh, pathway and enter the building lobby. Um, as you can see, it has that funky shape. Um, and you see the, the new, uh, building elevator, um, kind of in the middle right, uh, of, of the page. So those are the only two changes to the ground floor are this, uh, pedestrian entry, the lobby, the residential elevator and the, uh, and the vehicular elevator. Next page, please. So the existing retail would remain, other than that elevator that would, um, come through the middle of, of the space. Um, next, please. And then you arrive at what is the existing floor, uh, more or less the existing floor. In, in actuality, and I'll show this in the section, we'd be building a new steel floor, um, uh, on top of the existing floor, and there would be an interstitial space, uh, two or three feet to house all that mechanical ductwork that is both existing for the retail tenants. And we would add new ductwork for the residential units at this level. Um, and as you can see, this current scheme has a, uh, parking garage, um, in the middle of the space. And, uh, this was a recent development, um, since the last time you saw this. And we feel it's a better mousetrap because you have all of the apartments around the perimeter now, which are much better apartments with, uh, better windows and they're less deep. And we have the dark center of the, uh, of the building, uh, with, uh, 14 parking spaces plus one handicap for the, for the 14 units in the building. So, uh, the, the elevator stops at this floor. You park your car and if you are resident of, uh, uh, well, either way, you, you come out of the parking garage, there's doors left and right. Um, you either go right to your unit if you're on this floor or you can go to the, uh, uh, elevator on the lower right to go up a floor. Or there's two, uh, uh, fire stairs, um, right and left if you chose to, uh, take a stairway up to the second level. Um, I don't think I have to get into the unit layouts, but they're really nice apartments, a mix of one bedrooms and two-bedroom, uh, units, um, on this floor. And if you go up to the next floor. So, um, here we have, um, units that have private terraces that were cutting in to, to the roof structure. And as I'll show in the sections, these units have built, have been built in between the existing trusses. Um, which you can, you can see the delineation of the trusses. If you look along the top where the terraces are, there are those kind of darker double lines. And each one of those is an existing truss. And we're kind of slipping these units between those trusses. And at this floor, there's a center corridor, um, running through the building with units above it and, and below it. And next slide, please. And then at the roof, on the right side, at the top of the roof, we have a a roof deck, about 1,000 square feet for the use of all the residents in the building. In spite of the second floor tenants having their private terraces, this is more of a communal space at the, at the top of the building. And there would be Long Island Sound views from, from that roof terrace. Next, please. So this is, the top, the top is the west facade, which is the main elevation. If you recall, the photos you saw, we're actually, I think we're improving this facade significantly. The lower part of the facade remains as is, the retail stores, those arched windows, that stonework, the railing, that all remains as is. At the upper level, instead of those very small little almost fake puncture windows that were added 25 years ago, we are adding large, oversized, if you will, triple windows with clear story windows, transoms above. So each of those sets of windows is, at, at that level is a, either a bedroom or a living room along that. And as you can see at the floor above, that's where we're adding these terraces. And we're actually adding a dormer at that level to allow for these units to have access to the terrace and, and roof height to get out of that, to that terrace. And I think the section will explain that better. At the south elevation, there currently are no windows because that was the proscenium of the theater. So we're adding similar, large windows on that side of the building, which is actually visible as you drive down Lewis Street. I did this the other day. And you're looking at a big blank brick wall now. So I, I think this is an improvement from the Lewis Street side. And we have a couple of terraces we're adding to the units along that side of the building. Next, please. And then on the east side of the building, no one really sees this. This actually faces Greenwich Avenue. There's kind of an alleyway here, but, but these, the windows up here will actually look over some of the, the buildings on Greenwich Avenue, the lower, the lower buildings on Greenwich Avenue, except where there are taller buildings. But at the upper floor, again, there, there should be decent views looking over the buildings on, on Greenwich Avenue at this point. Next, please. So I think we can skip this, keep going. These existing plans, we can flip through these quickly. Go to the elevations, which we saw. So I guess we're gonna get to the sections. Actually, there's that blank brick wall I talked about on the, on the side elevation. And you see, again, I, I think we're improving the facade. We're certainly improving that facade. These are just empty walls right now. And we can quickly go through these. And I, I think that's it for the proposed plans, other than there was another document, Patrick, that had the sections that Chip had mentioned that we submitted later in the game.
Yep, we'll get that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions, folks? And does anybody want to leave some of that up? No, I see everybody's lost in thought. Doesn't anybody want to start asking questions? You want to start talking about what you saw on the sidewalk?
Mr. Granoff, the, the trusses, the units that are in between the trusses, will the trusses be left exposed? In the, in the units?
Actually, right now, the plan, Mr. Matt Crye, is to use the truss location as a divider between the apartments. And that's so we can get the headroom in between them. The trusses are quite deep. They're about 10 feet deep. And when Patrick pulls up the section, it'll explain a little better. So, and, and also, we need to fireproof the trusses as well. So unfortunately, given the scheme of adding units at the level of the trusses and between them, we really don't have an opportunity to expose them for both architectural reasons and, and fireproofing reasons.
But there, there is cross bracing, isn't there, on, on these trusses? Are they?
Yes.
What, what, yeah, what's going on?
There is existing cross bracing. And as you can imagine, if you can zoom in on the, the top, Patrick, I appreciate that. It might explain. Yeah, on that, on that view right there. So structurally, you know, we're doing a little bit of gymnastics here. We're adding a floor, which you can see on the top. Yep, that's good. Little less. Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, so if you look at what we're doing, I, I, what I spoke about before was there's a mechanical mezzanine that's labeled. That's the existing level that you walked on when you took the tour. Four feet above that is where we're adding this new lower level of apartments, if you will. And that is, we're basically building a structure within the structure. And that will entail this floor, the floor level as well as the entire floor level above that. And then you can see how, where the trusses are in between where it says unit four and unit six and unit eight. Yeah, there you go. Those are the trusses. And so those trusses will stay. But we're gonna have to do some, you know, structural reinforcing of the trusses. And there's, there's a few ways to insert this second floor. It'll probably be, be supported from below. But there's also a possibility to do some hanging of structure from above. We haven't engaged a structural engineer yet. But we did have a review with, with one of our structural engineers who basically said it's, it's feasible. It's just a matter of how ultimately we, we, we pull this off. So that kind of explains the, what's going on with the trusses and, and in between the trusses. I think if you go to the section below, this is actually, let me, let me clarify. Both of these sections are from the older design, but it's the same concept of inserting, you know, two floors of apartments within the existing roof structure. But what I want to point out here, on the upper left, is, is how we are cutting in the terrace and therefore creating, you know, the, the, the wall for the, for the glass to allow to get into the upper units. So I think that's the point to be made here. And this also shows in, in both, in, in all schemes how the existing retail and the existing parking are remaining below. And we're taking this cavernous two-story space that you walk through and basically inserting a steel structure and creating 14 apartments on two floors within that space and a parking garage, obviously. And I'm willing to answer questions.
I noticed you're not, you're not cutting into the roof on the north side so that those rooms are, can only have light coming in from east or west.
That, that, that's correct. We, we decided at, at that point, because the truth is that would just add more FAR. So we decided to keep that end of the building as the existing hip roof and not, not add more space at that end. That was a conscious move.
I, I have a, just a question. Were, were the, were there structural embellishments added when the existing floor was installed and, and perhaps you could, the, the floor that we walked on, and there's gonna be another floor above that you're gonna put, and, and perhaps you could comment on the structural integrity of the original 92-year-old steel trusses?
Sure. Well, the first question you asked was on the floor that's there. From what we can tell, it, it's, you know, it, it's okay for what it is, but it wasn't really designed to hold the kind of loads that we're gonna have for automobiles, obviously. So we always assumed we were gonna add a, a floor above that because we have so much height that we, we need a mechanical space for both the existing retail, you saw the ductwork that's there. And we'll use the same space for our apartments. So because we have the height, we're leaving what we call an interstitial space there and putting a new structure above it. So the existing structural floor is really kind of moot for our purposes. We might or might not tie into it depending on the structural analysis of, of those beams, which, again, that, that's up and coming once we receive this, this approval. Our next step is structural engineering. And the, the existing trusses are extremely robust, mostly because those were designed to be a full span for, for a theater ceiling. And so those are extremely robust trusses. The issue for us is, can, can we or should we tie into those trusses to support some of our new structure or, or not? And we, we will, we will conclude, make that conclusion with a structural engineer. But from an architectural standpoint, it shouldn't make much difference because we'll try to keep all the structure between our units as we've done with, with the roof trusses.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just curious about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Richard, can you talk to us about any, what the code issues are and how, how to install the, the parking, the parking area next to the residential units?
Sure. As you know, my firm designs many parking garages in many different types of installations. Sometimes they're below apartments, sometimes they're above, sometimes they're next to. And even in houses, we have garages adjacent to the kitchens. So the, the building code is very, very strict about vehicular occupancy adjacent to residential use. And specifically, it calls out for a three-hour rated enclosure on, on all sides. So that is a, a very, in, in layman's terms, what that means is that you're designing it so that if a car catches on fire, that, that the, the integrity of the structure will remain intact for three hours. I certainly hope that the Greenwich Fire Department will, would respond before, before three hours. And, and three hours is really the most robust fire rating for, for any, for any structure. So this, what we're proposing here is the, the floor, the ceiling and walls all around would have a three-hour rating. And also, it would be, the whole building would be fully sprinklered as any new residential structure would be. So between, between the rate, the fire rating and the fully sprinklering and the two means of egress, we, we would fully conform with, with the International Building Code. And certainly, actually, we plan a meeting with the Greenwich Fire Marshal as soon as we get kind of a positive direction from you kind folks this evening. Just go, they get buy-in from him on what we're proposing as well.
Are there any issues about like spills, you know, leaks and things that, like that from the cars? And, and I guess there must be venting, there must be.
Yeah, yeah. So mechan, mechanical venting, I should, I should have mentioned that. Since it's an enclosed space, it would be fully mechanically ventilated to, to current codes. And that is very robust. So that takes care of any noxious fumes and, and things like that. And as far as oil, oil leaks, there would be floor drains required by, by code as well for the same reason. And those would be hosed down and and that, that waste is also regulated, how that, what happens with those drains and filtration, et cetera.
And if, and how about the maintenance of, of the car lift and what if there's a a maintenance issue and, and, or even a backup with cars wanting to go in and out? How quickly does it you know, let cars in and go out? And how, how do you see, see that all working?
Sure. So we, we, as I mentioned before, we've done a lot of research on, on lifts since the, since the pre-app, just to be able to answer, answer this question. So we've identified two or three companies. One of them is completely custom. And in fact, I think you saw Nick Burley earlier this evening. And he, he's one of the possible vendors. And they offer various options as to speed. So speed is one of the options that, that you pay extra for a higher speed turnaround time. It's only one stop, which is good. So it's only going from the ground floor to the, to the parking level and, and back down. As far as maintenance, all the companies we're talking to have, you know, technicians 24/7, just like an elevator in, in, in any other building for repair. And obviously, we would have a generator backup for any, any, any power outages. And, and, and lastly, there's a large parking lot out front. So absolute worst case, if there was, if it failed and a maintenance guy didn't show up for an hour or two, there's, I don't know how many, 60 or 80 parking spots onsite here. So it's not like we'd be backing up into the street i- if there was a failure.
Oh, somebody could be stuck and they can't get outside to take an Uber or something.
Yeah, and certainly someone could get stuck in an elevator. That's very rarely happens. And this is, you know, similar reliability to a, to a passenger elevator. It's inspected every year by the state. And there would be routine maintenance quarterly or whatever, you know, we, we choose to have. So management certainly doesn't want to have any issues with this elevator. And part of our vetting out process for choosing a vendor would be reliability. And we want to speak to other owners for that vendor and, and make sure that the reliability and the maintenance response time is, is fast.
Rich, I just want to mention that I too talked to Nick Burley about some of these issues. And he indicated that a lift like this should have about 90 seconds is about all you'd need maximum to get from when you put your car in and when you took your car off and when it was ready for the next car. In addition, there are built-in redundancies, in addition to having a generator, built-in redundancies into most of these lifts now, such that if this fails, there's a backup to that. Even before you're calling the operators, the contractor rather, to come and, and, and fix whatever the problem is. So there's lots of redundancies built in. Yeah, and then, and then you have the refuse too. So I guess, is that a different issue with refuse versus the issues with the cars? And what about also the sprinkling? I guess you have, is this sprinklered this space or just the apartments?
No, fully sprinklered. The, the whole building, top to bottom, including the apartments, would be fully sprinklered. And refuse, you're, you're implying residential waste refuse?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, well, we have a trash room on the first floor and there would be a, a super in the building that would, you know, that, that, that would deal with that. And there would be, you know, a waste, a waste plant for the building.
Then you have ref, refuse in the garage. So you have staff taking care of that, right?
Correct. That, that's, that's the, 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 the plan right now is that residents, when they go to their cars, we drop their waste in the trash room. And then a, a super would, you know, first thing every morning would take that trash down the elevator in, into, into a trash room, a, a lower level. And then the waste management company would pick that up regularly.
Did you, did you consider a shaft to, for refuse removal?
It's, you know, it's kind of too small a building to justify that, that, that expense. And it's only, you know, two floors. We could consider it, but for right now, size apartment building, you know, the, the investment is it, it, it makes more sense for management to have a super take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
While we were walking the site the other day, it was actually interesting to see the trusses. As you explore, you know, and develop the plans more, hopefully you can find a way to, to keep the, the trusses exposed. That seemed to be one of the most spectacular parts about the interior. You know, riveted together pieces of angle. Kind of a piece of history there. Almost the sense, you know, if you could actually just, you know, clean them up and fireproof them with intumescent paint, that'd be great. Because then whoever's living there or inside it actually can actually experience the, the trusses.
Members.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
But even those cross members.
Yeah. Uh, it was just, it was just a spectacular thing. So Mr. Grandoff, on the southeast corner, there's a very tall stair. Is that just the egress from that rooftop terrace?
Yes, that's an egress that we're adding as a second means of egress from the rooftop. The primary egress would be through the main building stair. But given the size of it, it's required to add a second means of egress. Maybe we can use the steel cross members there and build a cool exterior staircase.
That's an idea.
Yeah. And by the way, I appreciate your comment, Nick. But I think those trusses are spectacular as well. And um, maybe we could do something in the lobby, you know, kind of a reference to them. Um, as we're doing at the mill, we're doing things like that as well, like pieces of history there. So I like the idea and I'll take it under advisement.
Wouldn't they be a little less grand if you didn't have that height? So given that they are defining the perimeters of these units, having them there up 11 feet is a little different from, or whatever the height is, from having them be 50 feet or whatever the existing thing is. I mean, I think, I think why we're so impressed with them is because you're in such a large space and they may lose a little bit of their, I don't know, I'm not an architect, but they might lose a little luster if, you know.
Yep. Understood. We could also do a photographic documentary of them and do something really interesting in the lobby, like a mural, like a polite mural or something dramatic like that. Um, I like the idea. So I think they're awesome, those trusses. So.
And actually, the walls that enclose them, actually can be shifted to one side. So they're actually inside a space. You know, inside the rating of the space itself. You know, being, you know, being able to experience them, you know, to walk up and touch them, that kind of thing. Now, are you going to have to modify them to actually pass, to be able to pass through them as well? Take out members that so you can actually go from space to space?
Um, only at the center where we have the hallway and we're still kind of studying that.
Okay.
Through the upper level, no one would really know because you see them from one apartment or the other if we were to see them. Or maybe expose them in the hallway somehow too. That's another option.
Uh, the more exposure, the better.
Yeah, understood. Within too much paint, of course.
Well, whatever, whatever works to get it to work. The retail spaces, you have fidelity investments on that floor. And then there's an existing retail space. And then there's going to be the elevator and another retail space. I guess that small little 500 square foot retail space is just now disconnected? That becomes something, part of something else?
Yes. Um, if we go back to that plan, we can talk about it if it's important, but yes.
Just kind of asking because it's, it's uh, uh, looking at that plan, it just, it was like a fidelity, FedEx, retail, so on and so forth, then a piece that just kind of disappeared into something else.
I think that Ms. Fagan is, you know, waiting to get kind of an approval before taking this to fidelity. And she has actually discussed it with them and they're okay downsizing a little bit. Um, so it's just a matter of how that space shakes out and what happens to the other space um, next door. But the elevator going through there and taking out a couple hundred feet within the scope of the overall development is relatively negligible.
Right. Uh, the car lift, is it hydraulic or geared?
It is geared. It's not hydraulic.
Okay. And the machine rooms, machines in the garage?
Uh, yes. So there's a few different systems, again, we're looking at and a few different ways to do the machines. But as you know, elevators have gotten a lot kind of simpler and more electronic and no more hydraulics for a couple of stories at least, no more hydraulics.
Right. And there's no overrun or anything to that?
Uh, there would be a slight overrun, but we have plenty of headroom to accommodate that within the garage and the structure that we're adding above.
Right, okay. Okay. Uh, now, it was pointed out to us, there's some spaces that are called dens.
There you go.
Yes.
Looking at the plan, some of them are very small, some of them are actually quite large. I guess it was an issue that needs to be addressed as you develop. Because for our purposes, it becomes what we are looking at, say, would be a one-bedroom. Has the potential to become a two-bedroom, very simply. Uh, I think as you go forward and develop, it's something to really take a good look at.
Sure. Well, as you know, Mr. McCray, the building code addresses what is a bedroom and what is not a bedroom. And for a space to be a bedroom, it needs, you know, X amount of natural light and ventilation. Um, it needs a closet and it needs access to a bathroom. The flip side of that, if a space has ventilation, closet, access to a bathroom, the building department would consider it a bedroom. And the flip side is if it doesn't have those features, then it's not a bedroom. That's pure building department, uh, you know, regulation. The irony in the Zoom age is that, you know, we always, and all the apartment projects we're doing now, and we have over a dozen in our office, we're always adding what we call Zoom rooms now because of the work at home uh, situation, which I think we all agree is not going to be a short-term thing. I think a lot of people are going to end up working home for maybe forever or whatever you might think about what's going on with the pandemic. But um, so we're consciously adding these types of spaces to all of our projects. Um, and you know, whether someone's going to use it as a bedroom, I doubt it in this situation. Um, but that's not something we can regulate or we can say is it's not a legal bedroom. Um, and look, someone could turn a walk-in closet into a bedroom too if they really wanted to. So um, again, this is a building code issue as far as it's not a bedroom. And we don't feel that in this type of project that someone's going to use that small den. As a bedroom rather, it's going to be a home office.
But tell me why it has, they have closets?
And a bathroom. I mean, it's nice to go to the bathroom and everything, but you're going to run into a problem. And this is going to be a building code problem for you?
Yeah.
If you're going to call, if the way you've got them laid out, you heard us. If you've got the way you've got them laid out.
I hear you. And we deal with this issue all the time with the building department. And if we have to take out closets or change an access to a bathroom to negate it as a bedroom, that's what we'll do.
Okay. I would have suggested that you vet that ahead of time, but okay. So um, that's fine. You know, you can get it resolved. My guess is you're going to have to take out the closets and the access to the bathroom. The, so that's on the layouts. Go ahead, Nick, because I think you were working your way down the list.
The recreation space. So I've got some balconies. Uh, I've got some rooftop areas. Um, so the garage level, I've got one balcony and a roof terrace that belongs, I believe, to one unit.
Yeah.
But I guess the assumption is that everybody goes up to uh, the rooftop on the fly. And then the uh, penthouse, everybody has a balcony or a terrace.
Yes. So about half the units have private terraces. The rest, the rest would use the common roof deck.
Okay. And then looking at the roof plan, is there something contemplated for the flat roofs that's remaining up there?
Uh, yeah, mechanical equipment.
Okay. So that's going to be like a condenser farm up there. Okay.
There'll be a condenser farm. Remember, there's mechanical equipment for the existing retailers as well on the west side, I guess that is. Um, so we plan on using the rest of the flat roofs for mechanical equipment and we'll fully screen it, obviously, when we develop it.
And uh, on the top of the flies, there's the uh, uh, what I guess you're calling a demonitor roof. That's, that whole thing is going to remain? That's actually part of the, is that part of the floor plan below? Do they have a?
Yeah, so. So currently, it's an existing kind of cathedral ceiling, if you will. Um, we haven't gotten that far in the unit plans. Um, but we're purposely leaving it on the plan because it's a really cool feature of the building that you actually see from certain points from West Plutnam and from Lewis. And we felt it was an important enough feature. We talked about taking it out, but we decided to leave it. And the space within it will probably uh, just be integrated into the apartment below as a cathedral ceiling.
Oh, that's great. Because I think actually, as like you said, it's a very visible portion. It actually relates back to the theater days, you know, being the, it's, you know, an integral part to the roof of the fly as added height.
And it's got a really nice aged copper roof on it, green. And you'll actually experience it from the roof deck as well.
The uh, uh, actually, as your discussions with the elevator, is it going to be sized uh, to just accommodate a sedan or are you going to actually go and make it big enough for an SUV or what were your thoughts on that?
Yeah. So there's multiple size options. Um, and the Nick Burley company is, they'll do anything we want. But the one we found that's a stock unit is a 10,000 pound capacity and big enough literally for a suburban plus. So we're not limiting the size vehicle that goes in there. We're going to, we're going to go for the 10,000 pound and suburban.
Great, great. Okay. Uh, but I guess it's the size that we choose at the moment, right?
Okay. So what do we need? Are you done, Nick?
I think actually it's more of a, it's more of a departmental things. And I guess Mr. Hasland had talked about they're going to reactivate the variances, that kind of thing. So that's in play as well.
Correct.
Right.
That we're going to ZBA next Wednesday, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Um, and I guess we'll, it still hasn't gone to ARC and you've been to HCC once?
Yes. Um, HTC took an interest in the project. Uh, I was having a discussion with the chairman, Steve Bishop, and mentioned it, and he said that it was something of interest to them. So they did a walkthrough and then we presented to them, I think it was a week ago or 10 days ago or so. Uh, and they actually wrote a letter to the commission and the ZBA talking about they're very much in favor of the project. Uh, but I think they also, and I did not lobby for this, but I think they also indicated that they would like to keep control over the architectural aspects of it because they were so enamored with the project. Um, and I had said to them specifically that ultimately, of course, it's up to the commission whether you want to send this to ARC or HTC and that it can't be both except for certain elements that are not competing. But um, so I defer again to the commission of where you want to send it. I know you're inclined to send to ARC, but they did make that request. And I'd be remiss if I didn't make reference to that letter.
Yeah, I think that's going to be, that's going to be our circus and our monkeys to figure out. Because it's, it's an interesting thing. As I, you know, yes, the building is old. Uh, but it's, you know, there's such a significant change to the architecture. So we're, I think it's a discussion amongst ourselves on that one. I'll have to get back to you on it.
Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Personally?
My personal thoughts?
Yes.
No. Um, since the HTC is already familiar with the project and there are capable architects on that committee too. Um, and they've specifically stated that they want to see how it fits in with the rest of the historic downtown uh, nature of Greenwich. I'd be perfectly happy to stay with the HTC and to work with them. I think they are confident to do it. Um, and but again, I don't want to step on toes and it's up to the commission.
Well, we normally don't have you go to both. Katie Pat, can you weigh in? No, I get that. I totally get that. But I,
I mean, the only time we've done both is if it's very clear what each one is reviewing, like if the HTC was reviewing the building and then they are doing signs.
I mean, I don't want you to put, I don't want to put you through both because you're also getting a lot of questions from the architects here.
I don't mind going to ARC, obviously, for the signage, for the lighting, for the landscaping, for anything else that would be uh, that you sometimes direct to them when you have HTC looking the architecture in Central Greenwich. That's okay. That's not onerous. It's only when you get into that situation we got in with Ralph Lauren building where they are competing reviews as to what the architecture should look like. And I don't think we want to revisit that ever again. So you haven't been doing that in recent years.
That's like the view that will never be forgotten.
Uh, but I'm perfectly fine regarding HTC. As I said, they took a great interest in it. I don't think they're that busy at the moment. They haven't had a meeting in a while before this and they really were just taken by it. Um, so I'm perfectly happy staying there. And as I said, I think the architects they have on board and the people that are interested in the area have experience. That's perfectly fine, my man. You're welcome.
Okay. Um, Katie Pat, input, somebody, so do we split it up? Do we have HTC work it? What are the thoughts on who can add value and how to make the process efficient?
I mean, it's not a, it's not a designated historic building in that sense, right?
So that's what I said yesterday and it's really bothering me, Mr. Hasland. So I actually don't think this is really in the purview of the HTC. I hate to say it because I like them and respect them and know they add value, but this is not their purview. This is not a designated, this is not an HO, it's not a designated historic building. I would say if y'all want to include HTC members as a courtesy, you could always have them attend the ARC meeting. Wouldn't that be fun?
Be careful of that. No, that's.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't think it's a good idea. I was just, you know, more people at the table, isn't that great?
No, 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 no.
To a gasoline party. It's like.
So, but I actually think in the strictest definition, and this is what I said to Katie yesterday, in the strictest definition of the term, you're in the purview of ARC. And I think I'd love to, we can share with HTC, we can find a way of being inclusive of their input without inconveniencing you to have to go to two bodies. Uh, we can come up with a way, right, Katie? We're always good at that. Yeah. Okay. We can always figure out how to bring people to the table and include them. Not put you through two bodies, but truth is, um, I think ARC is the right place to go. I would definitely solve this issue. Are you scheduled for anybody yet?
Uh, no, just the ZBA next Wednesday, but not ARC yet.
Okay. Oh, because your other variances are gone, right? I keep forgetting that.
Right.
Um, so I would definitely get that den thing done though, you guys. I would not move forward with plans until you've talked to the building department. You've got that den problem with the, because you're going to go down, you're going to get all engaged in that at some point with somebody and it's just not worth it. Get it resolved, get it off the table. Because, okay, just get it off the table. Just know either way. Um, and uh, I would go see ARC and um,
I just, I do want to say that I really appreciate that the HTC is taking an interest in this.
I think it's awesome.
Over and everything. So I think that was great.
I think it's cool. And I think that's great that they're so engaged and that they're so excited about it. But unless you're wanting to do an HO.
Margarita?
I just wanted to test that out.
I have no, I have no experience here, but there is some sort of historical resonance associated with this being this grand theater at a time, 92 years ago. And it may, and I assume that that strikes a chord with these people and
Absolutely.
And maybe deserving of some sort of recognition.
Exactly. And that's why I'm saying to Katie and Patrick, find a way of bringing or the applicant, bring them to the table, get their input, get the value of their insight. Awesome. But from a purely technical point, this is not a classified, this isn't a registered historic building, it's not in a historic district, they're not applying for an HO. It doesn't meet the categories. And the first thing, it's, it's an arbitrary decision on our part to send it to HTC. And I believe that that then says, well, sometimes we'll go here. I think consistency and adhering to the standards is more important. You know how I get, sorry.
Makes, said it well. Mr. Lowe said it well. And uh, I think that we do have to opine on the the historic character of this structure because it's significant.
I just want to point out, and then this is not to say that the comments are without merit. It's that the HTC has statutory, excuse me, has legal authorities in the state statutes, in the town charter, and they have specific functions.
Specific functions. I don't believe, and as Mrs. uh, Ms. Alvin said. That any of it touches this project. So the ARC is at your disposal. It's your uh. Agency to defer to on the architectural and lighting and those matters. So I I think it's it's more appropriate to be with them. Although, you know, it's it's great that we get the comment uh, and and perhaps, you know, there's a value in having things documented while things are open and those things for. You know, whatever that's worth, but uh, I I'm I'm just concerned that we're. Entering into a, if we go with HTC on something, we're we're giving them authority where they have none.
Exactly.
Yeah, they clearly have authority and that's whereas the ARC, it's, you know, you dictate to them.
Right.
Yeah, I I I like Mr. Granoff's suggestion. Maybe there'd be some recognition with inside the lobby somewhere in the building to. To its quote historic nature or its former past or however it is. But that that might go a long way to acknowledging the significance of it.
Those things are are merit are worth uh going down. And then that is more of a, you know, just a documentation of of things, not a. Legislative act or anything.
Right. Would you say, would you say, uh, Mr. Low, popcorn machine in the lobby would be, you know, a good indicative uh?
No, no. No, there are popcorn machines in every silly theater throughout the country. No. Now, however, maybe that if you could get a a copy of that King Kong poster, that was a a billboard poster. That is from that nineteen thirty, late thirty-two, nineteen thirty-three. Uh, uh, photo, black and white photo advertising the original Fay Ray King Kong movie. And put that in there and and on the marquee, uh, they were advertising that uh. That Farewell to Arms was currently playing there. And that that came out in the early thirties too.
Okay, can we, can we go back to the, I think it's.
No, 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 this is interesting.
But I've heard that you went to the movies eight times now. I'm sorry.
I didn't go see King Kong there. Stop it.
Okay. Okay.
So actually, I one one thought, one final thought I had on the HTC ARC thing. The bones of this building pretty much are staying the way that they are. We're looking at. Uh, new windows, uh, some new doors, those kind of things, uh, balconies, et cetera. Uh, there there's change to blank facade. And I think actually. If we were looking at uh replicating historic details or uh trying to save. Um, historic aspects of the exterior of the building, it would be one a one story. But with this, it's it's you're putting holes into blank facades of brick, uh, adding exterior egress stairs, those kind of things. Uh, and I think that's more of a technical aspect to really, really be hashed out um in detail uh with ARC. I think if if uh, you know, there was buttressing or brick details or, you know, uh, specific things that are unique to this building. That have to be saved or replicated or something, then it would be probably an HTC issue. But uh. With this, I think there's there's so much happening with it, the the details really need to be hashed out. I think ARC is the people to do it.
Okay, we're good. We've got a deal. So you're going to go to ARC and um. You know, that's a good thing. Um, and you've got, really, it seems most of your outstanding issues are going to be. Resolved with ZBA. Yes. The, you've got some issues with the layout. Um. Your call, there's some of this, we it's hard for us to ask you, you know, I think that the elevate, the the car transport thing makes everyone. It always gives us a little pause, but that's the, that's the, that's the owner's call. It's their marketing.
Quickly.
But it's their marketing decision, as long as.
Oh, no, 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 no. I I know they, I know it is. Uh, but you know, from previous experience, I mean, every time we talk about a. Some kind of a mechanical lift for vehicles. We had thoughts, we had uh ideas. I think uh, when the applicant returns is. To really take a really good, hard look of how that's going to work. Uh, delve more into the technical, the the aspects of it, those kind of things. Because it seems that actually the elevator itself is the key to solving a parking problem. And I want to make sure that actually when you come back, that yes, it's feasible, uh, you know, it's within the financial uh thoughts of the applicant. Um, there's no extenuating circumstances with it, uh, you know, those kind of things. Because if it doesn't work, then the parking doesn't work and we're kind of back to square one.
Yeah, if that doesn't work, I mean, that is the the key to this beautiful plan.
Yeah.
Well, there are other options. Maybe they're not as nice, but there are other options.
Yep. Okay, you guys.
Mr. Levy, I think we really think this is the optimum uh way of going, as long as we can make sure that this is going to work. Uh, as proposed, and and we're fairly very confident that it will.
Uh, you guys, we've gotten most of the way through this. Could we turn real fast to public comment?
Yeah.
I think we've hammered out a lot of stuff. The first person who has their hand up is Elizabeth Paldunas. Uh, Ms. Paldunas, if you would go ahead and please, anybody else who would like to raise their hand and comment, uh, please feel free to do so. I see that Diane Fox is in the attendees. I don't think it's for this application, but. I believe she saw it the last time we did this one. Ms. Paldunas, would you go ahead?
Hello, I just, I I hung around because I wanted to see this project and I wanted to compliment Mr. Granoff. It's just beautiful, brilliant, really absolutely neat. And uh, I think it would be a real asset to Greenwich. And I'm pleased that the property owner is investing the money in this to make such a um. Smashing project. So compliments, kudos, et cetera. Thank you.
Wow. Look at that. Somebody in the public who was nicely looking, he's glowing, Ms. Paldunas. Thank you very.
I like to support good projects.
Thank you very much for your comments. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, so we're most of the way there. I think y'all know what you need to do. Do you need any more guidance from the commission?
I don't think so. I think we're good.
Yeah, and and so we're a little nervous about the whole car thing, but you know, we want to find a way to be supportive, so.
Well, we'll bring in whoever you want us to bring in to testify if you want to as as to the mechanics of it, but.
I think at the end of the day, it's going to be your decision. I, it's the developer's decision. There's nothing in the regulation that's. And any regulation that says we have to be sure. I mean, we do have to make sure that people can get to the parking. And that it's accessible. That would be what, so if you can just tell us you're going to meet that regulation and we'll condition you, we would condition you on that. I give you the example, as you may recall, we had a very large project that relied on something similar. That project has not gone forward as of yet. We had all the same concerns. This was different because you stacked the cars. But you developed, you relied on a mechanical mechanism, mechanical thing, but not a mechanical mechanism. To park your cars. You were reliant on mechanical infrastructure to be able to park. We conditioned it. On that being feasible. So that would be the only thing where you've got to be able to meet your parking work, and you know, at that level of parking. Um, certainly, I don't think there's any discomfort with the amount. I haven't heard anybody voice any discomfort, at least on the amount of parking you're providing. Um, so anybody else have anything they want to throw out? Not allowed to poll anyone. Okay, that was a little joke.
Well, thank you. I think we got your direction and we appreciate it. Um, and uh, I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for this project.
Yes, I think we think we, I I think it's a cool thing. And I'm so glad because I remember when Ms. Fagan came in. And we started talking about it when she was doing the approval for the mezzanine. I don't know how, when that was, three years ago. And we said, wow, why don't you do something with that space? And I'm so glad that it's being explored.
Sure she appreciates that.
Alrighty, okidok. So we'll see you guys soon.
Thank you.
Oh, right. Okay, happy skiing, Mr. Granoff. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I hate it that all these people are having out having fun.
And don't, but don't hold it against him. You you're doing what you choose to do.
Yeah, okay. Um, now, uh.
Oh, Mr. Low, we had a choice? Wait a minute.
Yeah, because you hadn't told Nick that. I've been telling him he can't, he is obliged that it's a secret obligation to be.
No, it's part of the, it's part of our salary grade.
I'm holding my bringing up. There we go, Mr. Hegney. Uh, Mr. Hegney. Um, wait, he needs to, oh no, he's good. He just needs to unmute. Okay. And Ms. Sternlicht needs to unmute. Um, Mr. Hegney and Bernie Adler. Okay, I hope Mr. I missed Mr. Adler's going to do his parking this time. Hello, Mr. Hegney. Hello, Ms. Sternlicht. What happened to Mr. Adler? He's gone. Oh, there he is. He's got his hand up. Mr. Adler, you should be all set. Uh, if you can turn your video on, great. You cannot, okay. Um, oh, wait, there's somebody who has their hand up. Do you know, do you guys know who Evan Seaman is?
He's got a good, good idea. He's probably the lawyer.
For the Round Hill Association.
He's representative on Hill. When we get to the floor, we'll open that up.
Well, the last time it was the applicant himself that had their hand up, so now I take no chances. Okay. Mr. Adler, Ms. Sternlicht, Mr. Hegney, um, I think we're good.
Thank you, madam chair and members of the commission. Uh, for the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we were asked before you on February seventeenth. Uh, and there were a number of issues we wanted to address. And unfortunately, with some technical issues, we weren't able to share. Uh, Mr. Adler's report with you. Uh, just to jog everyone's memory, uh, this is a seventy-five acre parcel. Uh, that is bordered on the north by Old Mill Road and on the south by the Merritt Parkway. Uh, and looking to build an event barn for up to two hundred and fifty people, uh, pretty much in the center of the site. Eleven hundred feet from the uh, Old Mill entrance. And about nine hundred feet from the closest residential uh home. So uh, with that, uh, I'm going to ask Bernie to uh, walk through his report or summarize his report for you. Uh, and uh, and share his findings.
Okay.
I hope you can hear me today.
We can hear you. Thank you very much, Mr. Adler.
That's great. We had a computer problem last time. I tried to Mac get on by phone, but it didn't work. But I'm here today.
It happens.
I'm still, I'm still here. So the bottom line is um, a number of months ago, we presented a. Uh, a parking study uh that went through the system and was analyzed. And as it uh, it appeared uh on uh the calendar, on this commission's calendar. A number of questions were raised about traffic and the issue related to uh the number. The the intersections along Old Mill Road on which we have this access, as well as the. The ability of Old Mill Road itself to accommodate uh traffic. So uh, we then uh performed a traffic study. We did analyses of the intersection of Old Mill Road. And uh, and Round Hill as well as uh at Lake Avenue. Uh, and and what we found was, uh, well, the first thing we did was we collected new traffic data. Uh, so it was first asked, how well does that traffic data mesh? Uh, because we took it in during the COVID situation, uh, and how well did it mesh with all data? And looking at the data, uh, we went back to old conduct uh, traffic counts. And we found that uh, there was uh, old data in two thousand one, then two thousand eight. Uh, and what we did was we adjusted our volumes by fifty-six percent in the morning. And twenty-six percent in the afternoon to be able to bring it back to COVID, uh, pre-COVID levels. Uh, we analyzed the intersections for the existing conditions. Uh, we then looked at. Um, what the peak hours were for the highway. And basically, uh, the intersections uh during the peak highway hour, seven thirty, eight thirty in the morning, three thirty.
I'm sorry, Mr. Adler, and you're going to have to start with the peak hours.
So the peak hours in the morning.
Okay, good. Go ahead. It was just, yeah, there's somebody's talking in the background on one, one of the mics. Um, and I I was having trouble hearing you. Okay, go ahead, peak hours.
So the peak hours for uh, for the project area are between seven thirty and eight thirty in uh, in the morning. It's actually seven forty-five to eight forty-five and three PM to four PM. Uh, but we felt that it wasn't sufficient just to look at what the intersection capacity analyses were during those timeframes. We wanted to look at what the intersection capacities look like during the peak time of uh, the foundation house generator hours. The times when that project is generating its uh, its uh heavily, heavily, heavier volumes. Uh, the peak hours of the generator turns out to be of uh, eight to nine, uh, a little uh, hour later. Uh, and four to five, uh, also an hour later in the afternoon. Generating those cars during those peak timeframes, we found that the intersection levels of service. At both Round Hill, Old Mill, as well as Lake Avenue and Old Mill, were all A and B levels of service. Excellent, outstanding levels of service. But there was one additional uh, comment that was made. And that related to how well does Old Mill, uh, Old Mill Road itself operate? Based on uh, the traffic conditions as as a roadway, as an arterial rather than as an intersection. And in looking at it, we also collected uh twenty-four hour, uh, seven day a week uh data. Putting out a uh, an automatic uh traffic recorder on the roadway. Again, adjusting it by fifty-four percent in the morning and twenty-six percent in the afternoon to accommodate uh the pre-COVID uh data. And what we found was that uh, in order to analyze the. Uh, the roadway conditions as compared to uh intersection conditions. Uh, you need to look at uh, the the uh, the roadway density, which is actually the number of cars. Uh, per hour at a, at a, at a specific time. So it's or or per density is number of cars per a mile at at a specific time. So um, what we did was we took the volumes, the uh, the automatic traffic reporter volumes over the day. We uh, added to that the amount of cars that were generating based on. The number of trips uh to be uh generated by the foundation house. And we looked at that as compared to what the levels of service are on the roadway. Now, Patrick, uh, Tom asks if you can put up a chart that we prepared.
Thank you.
I thought this was an interesting chart because usually uh, we don't present uh. Uh, arterial analyses. We usually look at intersection analyses. So that's, that's it. So basically, what you see is uh, on the left, the uh, the Y axis is density in passenger cars per mile. Uh, and uh, along the bottom is actually timed from uh. Noon, mid, uh, noon to midnight. Uh, it's it's an entire day. The blue line that goes through the middle at eleven passenger cars per mile is the density. That separates level of service A from level of service B. So everything below that would be level of service A. Uh, and then the area between the blue and the yellow line would be level of service B. On the bottom, you see the chart as uh, the the volume changes over the day on Old Mill Road. And uh, the red line in the middle between eleven, eight, nine, or ten o'clock in the morning and the peak hours in the afternoon. Would represent the existing volumes. And the peak volumes that are added represent what would be the volumes. Added because of uh projects, uh, meetings and uh seminars that are held at the foundation house. The bottom line of this is, as you can see, uh, whether or not there are additional volumes, there is very little change. On the roadway and uh, there are the levels of service are at uh, the the best you can get, level of service A. And uh, that's what you look at on Old Mill Road. So uh, these are the the additional uh thoughts that we had uh, and that we presented as part of the report. uh, dated February five. The other comments from beta are basically site planning issues. So either, uh, Tom or, uh, Tony DeAndrea will address those. So, that's what I thought I would say.
Well, thanks, Bernie. I, I just, maybe it's an obvious question, but I wanna ask it anyway. Uh, will the proposed activities, uh, at, uh, Foundation House have a negative impact on the roadways or, uh, intersections in this area?
No, the bottom line is everything is operating at, uh, A levels of service on the roadway and A and B levels of service at the intersections, both at Old Mill and Round Hill, as well as Old Mill at Lake. So, that's the bottom line. If, if there is very, very minimal impact.
I'm, I'm, I'm struggling because the way we look at traffic doesn't get to an issue of, of, um, again, voice in the background, I, okay, um. It doesn't get to an issue of what it's like when an event ends and a whole stream of cars comes out. And that's the impact on the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I'm, who, um, could whoever that is mute?
I think it might be Mr. Barilak.
Oh, Mr. Barilak, oh, I'll mute him now. Okay, I got him. Okay, um, so, uh, so I've got this picture in my head of a stream of cars congesting a road and level of service, oh, spreads out and doesn't actually get to that question. Uh, that's the question that I, I, I don't know how to ask it because we always only look at level of service and we look at ITE. And does I, does ITE get added any better, Mr. Adler?
Uh, I. The level of service is basically a, a definition of a, uh, impact. It's, it's a grade that's given by, actually by the Federal Highway Administration, uh, in calculating what.
Oh, we, we, we know what it is.
Okay, so, uh, and, and it's based on, uh, human factors. It's based on, uh, years of study of how well, uh, an average individual will tolerate additional traffic. Whether he's waiting at a stop sign, whether he's waiting at a traffic signal, or whether or not he's just exiting a driveway. Or driving, in, in this case, what's on the, on the screen now, whether or not he's driving, that person is driving on an arterial, uh, you know, limited access, like, I, a, a minor arterial, uh, in a, in a set, uh, almost a rural situation, uh, and how it looks. Basically, there are gonna be additional volumes. It's not gonna be that, that bad a situation because the volumes, the, the volumes in Old Mill are so low, the additional traffic really doesn't generate that much more impact. And the, the traffic typically for events comes in very slowly. It trickles in. It's almost like a football game. People come early. But when, uh, the game is over, more people leave at the same time. The bottom line is even when you have that exiting movement, whether it's at the peak highway hour or the peak generator hour, you're still at A and B levels of service. And there's, you know, while it may be perceived as, there's a lot of cars, uh, it really has no impact.
Okay.
The, the other comment I would wanna make on this, Margarita, is that, oh, the, uh, any large event will have valet parking. So it's not everyone jumping into their cars at exactly the same time and, and taking off down the, the road. Uh, it's, it's going to be meted out based on how, uh, the valets get cars to people. So, uh, there, there is that, uh, limiting factor in, in terms of, uh, any exiting, uh, of large events.
I think, Mr. Mr. Hegney, that's, uh, you just described, actually, the real traffic problem. It's actually people waiting while the valets running back and forth, packing, trying to find cars and getting them to the people waiting. That's, that's gonna, that's the onsite traffic, yeah, but.
Well, and, and that affects no one but the people waiting. Uh, it, it's in the center of the site. It's a thousand feet from the road. Uh, so it, it really has no impact on anyone other than the people waiting for their cars.
Right. Uh, Mr. Adler, is there, are there ITE figures for large group gatherings that can be applied here?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
What I'm saying is that, uh, what I'm thinking here is, is, uh, so we have a, you know, a really good level of service on, uh, Old Mill Road.
Right.
And, uh, I'm just wondering, you know, worst case scenario, say there's a, a function of four hundred people. Um, does ITE have a, uh, figure that would represent, uh, you know, large scale functions? Because a, as I'm hearing this, Old Mill Road is, 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 you know, basically that the, uh, the, uh, traffic impact is, uh, near zero. But if a, a, um, there's a large ve, event there, that zero goes straight up because we have people coming in uh, on a, in a trickle, and then we have people leaving, uh, more as a large group.
But we, we looked at that, Mr. McRae. And, and that's exactly what we showed on that chart. That even when you have those larger departures, and we're not having any more than two hundred and fifty people, we, we're not having, it's not, it's not a football game with eighty thousand fans leaving at one time. When you have those, uh, two hundred and fifty people and studies have shown that two hundred and fifty people, uh, typically arrive in two people uh, per car as compared to individual cars on these types of events. And we, we cited the references on that. So you have a hundred and twenty-five. We even looked at doubling the peak fifteen minutes to do the analysis. So it was a worst case analysis, and even with that, there was no impact.
Okay, and, and the assumption, the assumption, actually, once they, people leave the site, the, the opportunity of actually, I guess, the peak gets split left and right. Uh, just another assumption by me, they would be heading out to, you know, uh, towards the Merritt Parkway, you know, at Lake Avenue at one end or Round Hill Road at the other. So then we can take up, you know, that peak of whatever is leaving at the site and split it in half onto the street. Is that a, is that a correct assumption I can make?
That, that's the way we actually split it. The majority actually went to Round Hill as compared to Lake, but, uh, that's, and that's why we chose those intersections to study. Because that's where the determinants would be, uh, figuring that those people would get, get back onto the Merritt.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I, I, I'm, I think I said this yesterday at the briefing, and I, I'm struggling, struggling because I feel like I'm trying to catch up with how this will really be and, and the special permit considerations. Um, it has to not impact the neighborhood in a negative way, and I just don't have my arms around it because I began with this picture of this very low-key zen kind of, uh, and I had this image of these little tranquil gatherings of small groups and and now I'm, I'm still not caught up with it having bigger events, and I'm, I'm not able to to figure out the impact on the neighborhood. And I know Mr. Adler is trying to tell me the traffic and he's, and I know what level of service means. And I closed my eyes and I asked myself, do you know the impact on the neighborhood and is it really okay? And I can't answer that question for myself. So, do you guys wanna move on to something else and I'll keep chewing on this? I'm sorry.
Well, uh, I, I, I do wanna, uh, deal with this because o, other than traffic and noise, there's no impact on the neighborhood. So, uh, discussions on traffic are important, and that's why we asked Bernie to not only look.
And we're really appreciative of that.
Service intersections, but how much traffic is on the road now? And how much traffic will be generated? So when you're looking at, at four and a half cars per mile at the peak, that's, that's not an awful lot of cars. And, and certainly, the intersections, uh, even at the peak periods have shown that there's, uh, a level of service A or B. So people aren't waiting long at the intersection to get through it. Uh, be they, uh, commuting in the morning or going to a larger event, uh, uh, at, uh, one twenty-four Old Mill Road. So, uh, and, and the other point is, we're, we're not exacerbating any issues that would exist at peak periods because these are all off peak hour, uh, events.
And the other point, Tom, is that it doesn't happen every day. It's, you know, a couple of times a month.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody, can anybody help me think it through, Commission?
Yeah, Mrs. Alba, I think actually.
Let, if you'd let Mr. McRae, Mr. Hegney.
I think actually, I kind of, I'm trying to equate it to a, a something else, and I think it would be as if they, if, if they, you know, worst case scenario in my mind would be a wedding at a country club. Where the, you know, we, the average country club in town is, you know, in a residential area, accessed through a residential area. Um, I think maybe Mr. Yeski might even have some background on this. If there's a, a, uh, uh, an event or a wedding with lots of guests at a country club and they leave all at the same time, how is the residential roads around the club affected? I'm thinking, you know, as an example, uh, Bell Haven Club, where you really have to drive through most of it to get to, you know, the, 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 um, arterial roads, you know, to get to someplace or, uh, uh, Round Hill Club, there's only one way in and out, those kind of things. It, it sounds like from what Mr. Adler is giving us is that it's the same kind of situation. Uh, except that actually at the, uh, right at the front door, it gets split in half and they can go in two directions. So I think if we're talking about events of, uh, as stated in the, uh, uh, application, uh, two hundred people or less, it could be an okay thing. But I think actually trying to wrap your head around it, you've really gotta take a look at what, actually how things happen in other locations. Uh, and I'm not too sure if, if staff or anybody else can add to that or any, any thoughts on that, that, uh, that idea.
Well, my only thought on that was not so much the actual event, but how many times an event like that happens throughout the year.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Like just thinking the polo club. I know we talked about that yesterday.
Every Sunday.
Sorry?
Sundays in the summer, right?
Um, right, but I was more thinking about the events. I mean, they're allowed to, that's the genesis of the club, basically, or the whatever, the, um, so I wasn't more thinking about the polo events as I was about, I think they have something like nine other events are permitted to have, I think, a year. Um, we can certainly, Mr. Hegney, didn't you look that up? I think you and I spoke about that potentially limiting. Ten, yes, it's nine, nine or ten, but, so the idea is, Mr. McRae was saying that, yes, you have an event, um, will it have a big impact on the neighborhood? To be determined, whatever, but if it's, if it's limited in, in the scope and how many times it, it occurs, that might be.
So you have, you have every single weekend, you have an event for at least two hundred guests. Because you have.
If, if you're looking at the July, uh, proposed.
No, I'm looking at the March twelfth staff report by Mr. LaRoe. And the fundraiser, large private event, twice a month. Um, two hundred guests and a large private event, two hundred and fifty guests, so I start at two hundred minimum. And both of them are twice a month, which means that it's four times a month. So every single weekend, on average, you have an event for at least two hundred people, according to the staff report. And so does that not impact the neighborhood that all year they can count on something of two hundred cars coming out of a facility all at the same time? And I look at what the events do at the schools that we have by special permit and how, when they empty out, they clog the neighborhood. And I'm sorry, Ms. Stern like, I know you're trying to do a good thing, but I'm struggling so much with the events and I just haven't got my brain around them yet, and I'm really sorry because that to me is the impact on the neighborhood, and I'm struggling with assessing it and weighing it. And there you are. Um, if my next door neighbor had two hundred people over every single weekend, okay, I live in a small house neighborhood, but how would I feel about that? That's.
Isn't it, there's another factor here too, even, even.
Help me, help me think.
Excluding the large events, in between those large events, um, we're seeing a steady diet of smaller events. And even though, s, from strictly a, uh, from Mr. Adler's, uh, study of the traffic patterns, even though that they may not have, any one of that wouldn't have a material effect on traffic per se, the overall sense of the neighborhood might be kind of concerning. I, I, I don't know, but I just, I'm saying.
I'm just struggling. That's exactly where I am. I'm struggling because I'm picturing it and saying, okay, if I lived there, how, what would be the impact? This, um, Mr. Yeski, you live, it, you live basically in that area of town. Tell me about your reaction as you hear the traffic impact.
I can go on the, on the data that's presented. I think what they've said is that it, it's not two hundred cars leaving at the same time or coming at the same time. If you stretch it over the road.
It's leaving. The event ends and everybody leaves at the same time. That's what normally happens.
Then I think, you know, that happens, but as Attorney Hegney said, uh, they're gonna force a gradual leaving by doing valet parking on the larger events. And that, I mean, I've been in a lot of valet parking. You know, you do wait, but that's your problem, not the traffic on the street, so to speak.
And two hundred people is a hundred cars.
Right, right, that too. I don't know, uh, Madam Chair, I, um, I understand the neighborhood, uh, and the, and the, uh, the environment of the neighborhood. I've driven that road many times. Uh, it's somewhat isolated. It's not like you're driving in front of your house, like your neighborhood would be.
Yeah, and I went, I've been driving around the neighborhood and I know it's, it's right by the Merritt. It's isolated. I get that. Go ahead.
Well, you just have to decide whether the data that's been presented, is that something you find too detrimental to the neighborhood, right?
Yep, that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, well, that, uh, you know, you've been to other events in town where there's two hundred cars, right? People leaving?
Yeah.
I assume, right? Uh, there, there's a lot of those. Um, and I also think you have to look at the purpose of this, uh, foundation too, to some extent. Um, you know, what, what they're trying to do for the town. Um, but, you know, if you're struggling with that, that's too detrimental to the neighborhood, so be it.
I'm trying to figure out how to think it through. I can't get my, I haven't thought it through. I feel like I'm at an impasse. Not that I'm a no or a yes. I feel like I'm an impasse. Victoria, you'd like to add something?
Can we think of a, a church, like Round Hill Community Church? I know that's on Round Hill Road, but, uh, what about the Stanwich, the church on Stanwich Road? Or that happens every week when they have, uh, worship services, uh, in, in the back country? Because I know Round Hill will have sometimes, their church would have a, a couple of hundred people at a holiday event. And the getting out's not, because people leave at different times. They don't all leave at the same time. Some hang around and talk, some. So it's uh, that might help get a sense for the, uh, impact on the neighborhood.
And to just to pick up on Victoria's comment, uh, the Harvest Time Church on King Street, uh, i, it has nine hundred congregants coming on a Sunday morning for at least one service, if not more. So, uh, and, and that was, that was a, a, a significant question that we had uh, with the Commission when that church was, uh, and actually was, the original design was a thousand seats in the sanctuary, uh, which was reduced to nine hundred. Uh, the same issue came up with the new Stanwich Congregational Church on, uh, Teconic Road.
Oh, yeah, I remember that one.
And it only went to the appellate court. Um, the, uh, the, there, again, the issue was, uh, traffic congestion on the roads and parking. Uh, and we provided for not only parking for every day, uh, every Sunday services, but also uh, for, uh, Christmas and, and Easter, uh, with overflow parking. Uh, here, uh, we have plenty of parking available. We're limiting the size to two hundred and fifty people. Uh, we've shown that there is adequate parking on site. Uh, the event space itself is a thousand feet off the road. And Mr. Adler's report shows that there is no impact on the intersections or on the roadway itself.
Hearing you and.
One way to perhaps think about it also is, is, you know, we always do with the special permit is the, the balance that, that's being presented here. So what is the community getting for non-residential use? A philanthropic use, which is admirable. Horse trails that are open to the public, preservation of a historic structure. Open space, the property will remain on the tax rolls. It is a non-for-profit. And then in exchange for that, you know, you get the philanthropic use, which I think is great. But the, so perhaps where the struggle is, and this is where I was kind of going with the polo club is, there's one thing where it's events that meet that philanthropic desire, so to speak, or whatever the charge. And then there's the other things that don't, like that are normal, single family house things, like a wedding. I mean, we've gone over this, that, that is something that people can do. So maybe it's in there that, that could be limited. And the, 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 the non, the, the non-institutional, so to speak. Perhaps so that, so that it, so that that's, you know, you see where I'm going there with the balance?
Yes, I think that's a good point and, and I, I and anecdotally, I, I have, I'm having a hard time reconciling some of the experiences I've had in the back country with events even smaller. And the traffic and the this particular program, which is, is quite voluminous and very, very substantial compared to these much smaller events. Backcountry jazz and many other things. Which are definitely creating congestion in the back country. But tho- those are quite occasional. This is a application which is suggesting a pretty consistent intensity of use. Which gives me pause as well.
So.
Margarita, I, I think, you know, Old Mill Road, this section of it, as I recall, doesn't have many homes on it. It's a low density neighborhood. And it's also, I'm just trying to think what the map looks like. Sort of runs parallel around hills, I recall. So I, I don't think it's as heavily trafficked as certain other places where, you know, exiting and entering that many vehicles, say two per vehicle, a hundred and twenty-five presents, you know, a lot of congestion. I mean, well, I think that's what the traffic study indicates, but you know, just from a non traffic study point of view, it's, it's a road which lends itself to this sort of traffic usage on an infrequent basis.
Okay. I, I just, I have this picture of being stuck after a charitable event lets out in Bell Haven and being trapped in Bell Haven for a really long time, much longer than I wanted to spend there. Mr. Hagney, let me just switch topics on you for a second. I'm unclear, I know you're a five oh one C three. So does that mean that you are considering yourself an educational institution not operated for commercial profit? Is that where you're going? Under the six ninety-four special permit uses, where did you finally decide?
You know, a- after the, the last hearing, oh, we, we had a discussion and I broached this with Katie as to which of the, the categories in the special use, special permit uses would be appropriate. And we looked through and, and my client said, well, I'm really a philanthropic institution more than an educational. There, there are certainly educational components to it and there's a fair amount of education going on. But it's really, it, it, it's really philanthropic to provide for a broader vision, a long-term strategic discussions on the arts and health, the environment, on community.
So are you planning a text amendment?
No. If you look at six ninety-four A twelve, if it's for philanthropic institutions as well. Now, it separates out hospitals and nursing homes and clinics, but there are semicolons in between each of them, separating them out as separate uses. And in, in looking at the regulation, I, I thought that this very much applied. And that's why I brought that to eighties attention. And we had a, a discussion on how philanthropy is defined. And how it's, it's an appropriate category for this to be in. And it, because this is a very unique use, you're not seeing this really anywhere else in town.
Okay, I always assumed that the philanthropic and charitable applied to all the stuff that went before it and you are saying no. And, okay, all right, okay.
Separated by semicolons.
That the semicolons, okay, so all this rests on a semicolon, I can deal with that.
My mother used to have a, a T-shirt and it said, let's eat grandma. And then it said, let's eat comma grandma. And punctuation saves lives. That was the point of, as, as, as an English major and an English teacher, that, that, that was her, her goal.
So, okay, I got that. I, I think it's taken me fifteen years to find the semicolon, okay.
I just want to put a plug out there for the Oxford comma, big fan.
Okay. How would you guys feel? Okay, so the next question is, of course, you've got these comments from Conservation, I think you can address those, that's not a big deal. You still have got some open issues with the preservation folks. And would you be okay with turning for public comment and then we'll come back and talk some more?
Of course.
Because we seem to have a lot of people, there, there are people here and we've only got, and we've got no applications left. So I think, folks, Evan Seaman is the first person, Mr. Seaman, if you would go ahead. Everybody else just raise your hand and we'll call you in sequence. Whoever wants to speak. Okay, don't, don't raise your hands then. Okay, so there's a lot of people in the audience, but nobody wants to speak, is that right? Okay, all right, Mr. Seaman.
You are the highest rated show on public television in Greenwich. So people just want to see what you have to say.
You know, I was at a, I was at, it's a different public hearing on Monday night. And I'll tell you, that was a very highly rated show. It was, and it went twenty-four hours solid. Mr. Seaman, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes, yes, you're perfect, sorry, I didn't tell you.
Thank you. So I'm here this evening on behalf of Round Hill Association. I'm a lawyer from Robinson and Cole. And the first issue that I just wanted to bring to your attention was that yesterday, on behalf of Round Hill Association, we actually requested that this hearing be postponed. And I'll get into that in a minute. Obviously, that's not possible at this point, so.
No, we're here.
The best that we can do right now. I'm sorry, I have someone entering my office. So the best that we can do right now is to request that this public hearing be continued. And here's why. Yesterday afternoon, the applicant submitted a letter to amend its application. All this discussion about philanthrop, the philanthropic use category, which you just had with Mr. Hagney, that didn't actually occur, that wasn't filed until yesterday. The Commission raised this issue a month ago at the last hearing.
Well, maybe they didn't find the semicolons either.
Yeah, that, that could, that could have been it, you know, those are tricky sometimes.
Clearly.
Since the last meeting, we have been in contact with the applicant. And there was no indication, at least as of last week, that this was coming.
Yeah.
Also, since the last meeting, the Association has met with the applicant. We believed that we had agreed to conditions of approval that would protect the residential uses in, in this residential RA four zone from, from these impacts. But yesterday, also in this letter, the applicant chose to walk back from those conditions to which it previously agreed. There's been a demonstrated pattern here of the applicant and its lawyer unwilling to work with the Association through mixed messages, inaccurate summaries of meetings and last minute communications not shared with us, except by staff. Round Hill Association does not have authority tonight to support this application. Not because it doesn't want to, but because it can't. This was all dropped on us yesterday. I don't have a consensus from the Association and can't be expected to respond to these changes at the last minute. The Association hasn't had time to convene its board and hasn't reached a decision on these, on this new amendment to this application and basically unwinding these conditions, which were agreed to. We're not trying to play games. We genuinely do want to support this application, but we can't do that tonight. I don't know why the applicant, hopefully it won't object to continuing this public hearing so that we can continue to work with the applicant. There's, there's time under the Governor's executive orders to continue this hearing. It would be fundamentally unfair to close this hearing this evening. And if the Commission does postpone, or, I'm sorry, if the Commission does continue this public hearing, the Association will continue to try to work with this applicant. Will again, sit down with this applicant and talk about these conditions of approval. So that's the first point I wanted to make, there's not.
At some point, okay, go ahead and when you finish your points, I got a question to ask you.
Sure, I just have, I think, two more points. First thing is about these conditions of approval. And, you know, the applicant has submitted a couple of letters, one last week and one yesterday, discussing, you know, we, we've talked with Round Hill Association and based on our discussions, we agree to the following conditions of approval. Well, that's not what was actually agreed to when all parties met. I did submit a letter last week, which does go over the conditions of approval, which we had agreed to. And that, and at this point, that's, that's all that the Round Hill Association as a board has decided to support. It hasn't had a chance to, to do so with, with this new, based on this new submission yesterday afternoon. And then this brings me to my final point. And that is the five oh one C three issue, which I know was discussed at the previous hearing and was mentioned earlier. And it's our understanding that the Commission has required in the past five oh one C three status for other similar not-for-profit special permit uses under the zoning regulations. Now, the applicant last week did submit a letter stating that it is, quote, "a project" of the Giving Back Fund, which is a California charity. And that it is, it is, quote, "under the auspices of this entity." The applicant hasn't submitted any evidence that it itself, the foundation house, is a five oh one C three entity. Being a project and being under the auspices of a five oh one C three entity, respectfully, that's, that's not enough, that has no legal meaning. The concern here is that the Commission would be approving a use, a commercial use, which is not authorized in a residential district. And we know that this Commission has considered similar issues in the past. There was, I believe, an application center for hope and renewal where that, where that did come up. And it's under, our understanding that the applicant there was a five oh one C three and the Commission rested its decision on that fact. We know that that case did, you know, go to litigation. So we respectfully urged the Commission to consult counsel from the Town Attorney's Office.
Yes, but, okay, we will. Mr. Seaman, we will, we will consult with the Town Attorney, but we were upheld in that decision on appeal as well as on the initial. So just, the Commission is very, very careful. We will certainly explore this. I saw that they, that the assertion that it's a five oh one C three and we can, we can definitely, but you're absolutely right. Go ahead, just wanted to say, just wanted to point out that we did win that lawsuit, just because you didn't mention it, go ahead.
No, I, you did win that lawsuit, I, I, I agree. And that, you know, that, that's about all that we can say tonight. We're concerned with this new use classification. We haven't really had, fully had time to understand it or prepare to what was submitted yesterday. And unless this Commission keeps this hearing open, the Association can't support this application tonight.
Mr. Seaman, have you had an opportunity to review our special permit standards? In their entirety?
Yes.
Okay, so if you were to look at our special permit standards under section six seventeen D of our regulations, which standards are you currently, is the neighborhood currently concerned with in regard to this application?
You know, I'd have.
So I think it's important, and so the, you've heard the, the traffic presentation. And so I guess I should go down, let me just go down from the top. Not materially adversely affect adjacent areas located within the closest proximity to the use. Preserve or enhance important open space, we've got. Not interfere with pedestrian circulation, not really a problem here. Not adversely affect safety in the streets nor increase traffic congestion. And it's very specifically references level of service. Be in scale with and compatible with surrounding uses, building streets and open spaces. We know they're preserving land structures or features having historical merit. Will not affect, materially affect residential uses nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics. So those are kind of the ones, as I read them to you, where would you say your clients' concerns are focused? What in the change that the applicant has made to, to what they're proposing, are you most concerned? If you don't want to tie it to six seventeen D, you can let us do it. And just tell me where your clients are the most concerned in terms of impact?
Sure, and with the caveat that I haven't, you know, the client hasn't had time to reach a consensus on this new submission yesterday. But generally speaking, it's the large events. The, the frequency of the large events, and by large events, I'm, I'm referring to events of a hundred people or more. And large events, you know, how often they'll occur? When they'll occur, whether it's on weekends only, which was originally agreed to when the parties met. Or now, whether they could potentially be expanded to weekdays. And it's the, the hours of the events when the site is, when, when all of the activities on, on the site will cease and, and the site will become dark and quiet. So primarily the concerns are with respect to that, as well as the five oh one C three issue, which I mentioned. We want to make sure that the Commission consistently applies its regulations on that issue. So that's all I have, unless there are.
It's, it's difficult because you've heard, and this is where I was struggling. I, you've heard Mr. Adler's presentation that the large events were not going to impact the, the neighborhood or the level of service. And again, the traffic issue specifically references level of service. I, I'm trying to make sure that the neighborhood retains its essential characteristics, is protected. And I'm trying to get my mind around it. Now, do you have anyone in the public who, in addition, any of your clients are going to speak? Or are you representing all of the Round Hill Association? I don't see any other hands up.
I believe I am speaking on behalf, if anyone wants to make a correction or, or elaborate on anything, by all means, they, they are free to do that.
Yes, Mr. LaRoe.
Mrs. Fox would like to speak, I don't know.
Oh, there she goes, yep, she got her hand up, okay, I've been waiting, I, it was, okay. Now, I think Mrs. Fox is going to address, oh, I should have made her, Mrs. Fox is going to address the preservation issue, right? Mrs. Fox. There was that moment when you don't know.
Are we all unmuted now, can you?
Yeah, I know, there's always that moment where, when people come into the meeting and then it's silent and then you're waiting for the tech to work, there's always that. when people come into the meeting and then it's silent, and then you're waiting for the tech to work. There's always that pause.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Fox, please.
Thank you. I hope you received the letter from the Preservation Network earlier today and not before the meeting tonight. So first of all, I appreciate the opportunity. And we want to thank Ms. Sternlich also for talking. She did reach out. We've had a conversation. And as the letter indicates, we we discussed this issue of the manor preservation facade easement. And it's my understanding, based on what she said, that she does not wish to provide that because she does not want to tie the hands of future owners, which is, so that issue is off the table from our standpoint, just so that you know that. However, our key points really have to do with the Selig Mill and the need for repair, restoration. And I believe you've seen the pictures of the condition of the mill right now, with the tarp on the roof and what we would consider to be inappropriate materials that have been attached to the building. I'm not suggesting that she did those because she may have put the tarp on, not she herself, of course, but her workman. But there is some question as to those whiteboards that have been placed on the building may not have been her work. It may have been done by the prior owner. We're just not clear on that. But there seems to be some indication. And you also had a picture of the internal picture of the roof structure, which we're concerned about because it's not just a question of the tarp protecting the building, but really what the integrity of that roof structure should be to protect the building as a whole. And you have a picture of the internal because you can see that the gristmill is still there. We're very concerned that that gristmill actually stays in that building. That's another issue right there. But the need really is to replayer and replace the roof itself. There was an additional picture that was sent to you subsequent before this meeting that showed a picture of what the building actually looked like. That's what we believe to be 1994, and this is based on what Deborah Mecky and Chris Shields and the Historical Society submitted. And it looked like that's what the building looked like at the time of 1994. So that gives a comparison of what the building should be repaired and restored to compared to what it is right now. Now, this tarp may be, you know, a temporary situation, but it's an unknown to us. And quite honestly, it's not going to hold up more ways than one in the future. It does not meet the intent of the Declaration of Restrictions for the Historic Building. And you also received the drawings of Carl Mecky and Deborah Mecky's report of 2017. And it does show that there was damage done by the pre or during the time of the previous ownership, but not all of the repairs had done appropriately. So our position really is that the owner has the responsibility of restoring and repairing according to what had been existing back in 1994, which is the picture that you had, and based on the report that was submitted back in 2017 by the Historical Society. We also are asking for an opportunity to actually visit the site. Now, not not all of us have to go, so I just want to make that.
For Ms. Sternlich, I think so many of us have insisted on going to see it because we're so excited about the property being conserved.
It is. It's a beautiful property, and the the key thing is that there are key people. I mean, obviously, the Historic Society is named in the declaration as the one that should be doing an annual review. Yes. That's the picture for the 1994. You can see the roof and you can see the building where it was at that time. So the Historic Society should be allowed to go. Conservation is also interested in making sure that the conservation easements surrounding the mill building are protected. Now, we know there is a fence, which is great. But on the other hand, there is some issue about some trees that it may have been cut down, some riding trails. So Nancy Dickinson, on the Conservation Commission, who's on our preservation group, would like the opportunity also to traverse the property. So it would be Stephen Bishop and Deborah Mecky and also Nancy Dickinson, and we may have one or two more people. But we would like to see if it's a possibility that we can follow up on the annual inspection requirement that was in the declaration and get a better visibility on what the conditions are now. And ask Ms. Sternlich if she would be willing to give us an idea of how she prefers to or proposes to create a better roof structure and also the integrity of the roof itself. The interior pictures there do not really give us a clear indication of how structurally supportive that roof is with or without a tarp at this point. So we really are focusing on the gristmill at this point and wanted to see those declarations to be continued and have the repair and restoration.
Would the applicant like to respond at all or?
You know, I I, before Mimi responds to the the tours, because as you know, she's very willing to take anyone and everyone on a tour of this property. The the 1994 declaration says that the Historical Society is going to make periodic annual inspections of the mill to ensure the facade easement is being reasonably maintained to the standards herein. The only report I've seen is one from 2017. And so my client bought this property 15 months ago. It didn't deteriorate to the condition it's in now over the last 15 months. It took the last 25 years. And it 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 puts her in a difficult position to to rehabilitate something that has been so poorly neglected over the last 25 years. Mimi made the the pledge to Diane that we would work with the Preservation Council and the Historical Society and and the Historic District Commission. And and we're we're prepared to do that. But this isn't going to be turned back into a habitable structure any means, and and we have to work at what what is appropriate and and what can be preserved here. So I I just wanted to set that tone because it can't be ignored for 25 years and then say, oh, by the way, we've looked at this and you really need to fix it. So it it's something that has to be worked on in a collaborative way, and and that's certainly what what Mimi was pledging to do.
I I'm sure that's the case, and I I wouldn't disagree with that. However, I know I was out on site before 2017. And in fact, Eric Brower, myself, Deborah, I think Carl was there too. So it was before I left the office, as one would say. At that time, there was a tree branch that had hit the roof. And we remember this very clearly because we said to that then-present owner, we need to remove that branch. It wasn't his doing, but it it collapsed a certain section of the roof, but the rest of the roof was fine. So he said he was going to repair it. Now, what we don't know in between this time period is what he did. Did he put up the tarp? Was there further damage after that incident before Ms. Sternlich took over this property? We don't know that. But the tarp itself is just, as Stephen Bishop indicated, is a temporary type of, as it were, fill-in for repair. So obviously, something has to be done with regard to the roof. With regard to the other siding pieces, I'm sure that something could be addressed. But we're not looking for, you know, a heavy-duty new roof. We're just looking for something that can be at least structurally sound and actually more in keeping with the original look of the building. So I don't think that's really extraordinary and probably not a big expense.
But you all are working on this now with the applicant?
No, the last thing, Ms. Sternlich and I, she submitted these pictures to me. I passed them on to the network. There was strong concern about the tarp and about getting some of the repair work done and about preserving the millstone in the building. We don't want that to be removed because that is part of the history of the building. So that's the way it's been left. And as I indicated in the first paragraph, the manor house is up the discussion at this point. So that's where it's been left at this stage. So we would like the opportunity to work together with her and some of our members. We don't want to have all 12 members having to trample out there. I actually hit her up with all of this stuff. So we're trying to be very calm about it and trying to be selective about people who would go out there, who have something to really say and have some responsibility for the project.
Ms. Sternlich, do you want to?
Sure. No, I'm absolutely as always happy to give tours. Happy to have you come.
You should start checking us for it. You won't have to have fundraisers.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, it's it's interesting because, I mean, first of all, you know, I kind of read all documents very carefully, and it did say in there that acts of God was something that we would not be responsible for repairing in that document. And I believe that a tree falling from a storm is an act of God. So I think that, you know, that would be kind of, you know, it was on the last owner, apparently, when that tree fell, but that would that would have been something that would have, you know, honestly not fall under what I should be taking care of. I was also told that I needed to just prevent further damage, which is why we put the tarp on. There was a whole side of a building was coming apart. We put, you know, a log in, which you can see another log in that picture, that we had to kind of re, and we we did a lot to shore the building up to the structure that it is in that tarp picture because it really was falling apart. I took pictures inside because then you could see the roof, that the roof is completely open. And so for years since 2017, since your last visit or the commission's last visit, rain's been coming in, snow's been coming in, the roof has been falling in. I'm just kind of curious as to why now suddenly it gets the attention when you knew in 2017 that it was a a big issue and a tree had fallen and and there was no other inspection on it. It it seems, I I was told when I inherited the property, I needed to make sure no further damage was done. Not that I needed to go back to a 1994 condition.
Well, I can't speak for the Historic Society because in the declaration, as you know, it's their responsibility to do annual reviews. So, you know, that's and the report, for some reason or other, the 2017 report, according to what I was told by Deborah Mecky, may not have reached the commission's ears because technically speaking, it's the planning and zoning, well, it's the town through the Planning and Zoning Commission that can enforce the declarations. So I think the idea is, yeah, there was an act of God, but it didn't destroy the whole roof. That that I know for certain because we did have pictures at that time. And Carl Mecky's description in the sketch just shows a small area. So if there's been further, you know, damage, I'm not saying it was during your tenure at all, but it does need to be looked at. Otherwise, I think this is a severe, a significant problem as a historic building. And I think that's, you know, I don't think it's going to be a major issue, but I do think it's something that would certainly warrant a lot of public attention and probably some benefits from your standpoint to show that you met some of the intent and purposes of the declaration.
I I would also note that we did write letters to the previous owner. And they had done some work. Mr. Brower had helped us secure that with the previous owner. So that so that has, you know, so it's not like it just came up yesterday kind of thing. I mean, this has been in the works for a while.
So we're we're prepared to see what can be done in a cost-effective manner. And Diane, perhaps the meeting with Steve Bishop and Mecky and yourself out at the the Grist Mill is is the next step.
That would be great.
Right, we'll do that, and then we'll just take it from there. I mean, I'm 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 happy to do certain things, but I'm not, I'm not, it's, you know, to bring it back to the 1994 condition seems.
Well, it might be just the roof. I mean, you know, until we get out there, we really don't know.
I mean, the inside is an entire.
And it it was not in great condition even when we were out there during that time. So we're not getting into the interior issues. And that's not something that is even in the declaration. So I wouldn't even, you know, surmise that we would do that. We just want to deal with the exterior at this point.
Got it. Okay.
Great.
So you guys are going to keep working this and figure out some sort of solution that all parties can agree to?
We'll we'll try to get together as soon as possible.
All right.
Good time of year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the question of the 501(c)(3), I I just, I took an opportunity to re-glance of, Mr. Seaman suggested that we talk to counsel. When I look at something that says it's a not-for-profit operation, that's all we've got. Now, I I know Mr. Seaman referred to this case of the Center for Hope. In that situation, even though it was a 501(c)(3), the questions were raised whether it was really operating as a charity. The commission acted as it saw fit and made a decision. So I'm asking, Jack, really, what do you think, Katie? Should we have counsel look at this? Or can we rest on the documentation we've been provided? Or can?
I can give you further color on what the situation is because there's something called a fiscal sponsor, and maybe, Mr. Seaman, that's not something you're familiar with. But when an organization is new and they can't afford back office administration and all the legal support and everything that they're often kind of adopted by another charity, they share their 501(c)(3) status until they're ready to be kind of big enough and good on their own to get their own 501(c)(3). So you operate, you know, every document of every, you know, thing that I do, any contributions will all be made to the 501(c)(3).
I saw that.
All the legal backend is done by the Giving Back Fund as our fiscal sponsor, and that that's really, it's a, it's a very usual process for a new philanthropy.
Okay, probably would be good if you sent us, it's a documentation. I mean, obviously, we've got the the transcript of the meeting, but if you sent us that, if you actually gave us something we could put in the files, put on on record, Katie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done, I'm sorry, Ms. Hagney, just quickly, what we've done in previous applications is we've, I don't know how far along you are in establishing this entity, whether it be the one you refer to or the parent entity, what have you, but.
The parent entity has acknowledged them as being of an adopted, an adopted organization, if you will. They're in the, they're in the orphan, they're not in the orphanage anymore. The parent entity owns them, and they have a 501(c)(3). The question is, is that sufficient? Hold on, we got to wait for Katie for a second. No, it's fine. Go ahead. Okay, so, Mr. Hagney, why don't you go ahead and give us some comments while we wait for Katie?
Well, I was just looking at the letter that we received from the Giving Back Fund, which we provided
Right.
staff, and it says, "Giving Back Fund is governed, the, the, to clarify, Foundation House receives its tax-exempt status from the Giving and is governed by the Giving Fund's Board of Directors. Copy of our 501(c)(3) letter is attached. All contributions to the foundation are tax-deductible to the fullest extent of the law."
Yeah, so.
Who is that from? I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's from the parent charity that Mr. Seaman referred to that's in California.
Called the Giving Back Fund.
It's called the Giving Back Fund, and it it has sort of adopted the nascent Foundation House and given it the benefit of its 501(c)(3) status. And contributions actually go to this outfit and are forwarded into this outfit in California for its custody. In addition, the applicant has submitted proof that a letter on that, on the not from the IRS that goes to the parent, the the parent one, which is the giving back. The question is, is that sufficient, Katie, to establish that this is philanthropic?
With, just based on what we've done in the past, we have, we have received letters similar to this one, things from the IRS, what have you, just something, some documentation establishing it as a 501(c)(3), and that has been upheld. So I would think as long as we've got the documentation stating as such, and we can, you know, it's part of our record, I don't see how we could, you know, we don't have the authority to challenge that, so to speak. I mean, in other words, we're not the IRS.
I think that an explanation of the role that is fulfilled by the Giving Back Fund would be helpful to put in the record, just to clarify for the future who they are. Nick, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I think, Katie, what you had brought up there is, you know, in in previous discussions, I I remember that actually we were always talking about actually having something in the file from the applicant concerning the status of their 3, 501(c)(3) issues. I think with this one, from what I'm hearing here, there's not, there's a direct link, but it's that link that's actually the thing that's confusing. Is that actually that the Foundation House is not a 501(c)(3), but it's working under the auspices of another entity that is. And I think that's where the confusion is that we need to kind of clear up. You know, if, if they had their own, had their name on it, it was in the file, that's what we did before, great. In this case, it's that link that's a little fuzzy to me.
What if they decide not to go through with this association? So.
It's done.
It's done.
Guys, I, I honestly think we're, this, this is, this is absolutely commonplace. I manage a, a 501(c)(3) for my day job that has 120 different offspring, not one of which has a 501(c)(3) letter and we get real estate tax exemptions all across the country. It's very, very routine. I, I don't know the Giving Back Fund, but there are lots and lots of ways to check out their bona fides if, and I'd be happy to, to, to maybe do a little homework on them if you like, but, but the structure of it gives me no pause at all. Seems very.
Actually, this is, it would have to be, it would have to be, just if we wanted to go to council. Okay, so we are satisfied with that and that leaves us, I, I feel like this is all we've ever asked for. I know there's a question, but I think if, if our council feels it's acceptable, which in the past they have. So that leaves us with the final issue of Round Hill. Well, there's Ms. Fox's comments and also Round Hill having requested that we leave this application open as they consider the special permit issues. I am inclined to agree with the request and to concur with it just from the very point of view that special permit issues are all about impact on the, on the surrounding area. And if we can address concerns and they can articulate them, it's a better thing. I feel badly that we, that this has gotten prolonged. I don't know who's at fault and I, you know, it's not my job, but I feel badly that it means people keep coming back and we keep talking about the same things. What do you guys think? Are you, should we leave this open and continue to work the special permit considerations? Or are you comfortable? What do you all think?
I think we should leave it open. I think actually this, I think that Mr., uh, Mr. Hagney and Mr. Seaman should, uh, discuss amongst themselves any of the outstanding issues that were brought late to the table. I also think, Mr. Hagney, will you return if we could get some more clarification on the water issue? I just want to make sure that's buttoned up as well.
On the well?
Yeah, the well issue. I'm still a little fuzzy on that. But if you could actually define it, is it, it's, I believe it's a state thing. You gave me background information about how that works, but, and something from, from a well company, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that to make that, make sure this is correct.
The state has a form for that.
Yeah. They have forms for everything. And I guess you had, there were discussions with, uh, conservation on trails and things, that kind of stuff. And they wanted to keep a stone wall as a demarcation. I guess that's been resolved.
Oh, what, what I said to staff was a letter, uh, including a aerial photograph from 2006 showing the clearing and the path. Not something my client has done. Uh, not sure when it happened. The, the aerial photographs before that are a little fuzzy. But certainly, we're not looking to move any of the stone walls anywhere on the property. We're looking to be able to maintain it basically as it is. So that, you know, the riding trails can be enjoyed by the public and it remains in a natural state.
Okay. And the, the, the 694-812, uh, the philanthropic and charitable, if you can just provide a few words to that effect, I'm, I'm, when I, when I read philanthropic and charitable, I'm thinking of a something different than what I think maybe is intended here. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page of that, or at least you and I are on the same page.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I mean, two of us want to leave it open, so that kind of sets us usually, but I just want to hear input from people. Any, got any guidance that anybody would like to offer? Any comments?
Well, I, 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 I don't think we have a, a lot of choices. Regrettable, it seems to me that, that this has stretched on, uh, but, uh, the comments from the Round Hill Association seem to be material to the application. So I don't, I don't see that there's any choice.
Okay, and Mr. Levy, I know is still not, still raising some issues. Okay, um, when we opened this, we did not open, we did not address the issue of the subdivision. So, um, we, I only actually opened the site plan. I went right to the site plan and special permit. Um, we have not, um, opened. Uh, one thing, by the way, Mr. Hagney, we would require an extension.
Certainly, happy to do that.
So, do you want to, um, do anything with the subdivision portion? The subdivision application, do you want us to just continue it?
The subdivision application is merely to allow for the septic system, for the new vent barn to be in an open area so we don't have to cut any trees down to install it. And we're taking four acres away from one parcel and adding it to another. So it goes from 28 to 24 and 17 to 21 in terms of acreage of these two parcels. So.
Uh, Mr. Hagney, I don't believe there's any outstanding issues with the subdivision, but yeah, I'd like to request that we had to keep them linked. That way we can do it all at one time.
That, that's what I was going to suggest as well. I, there's no point in approving the, the re-subdivision or determining it is not a subdivision or a re-subdivision. If we're still outstanding with the site plan issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, to the extent we need to provide an extension, we're happy to do that.
So on the subdivision, you therefore, um, Mr. Bazili, what I would suggest is if you wouldn't mind that you combine the records. Would that be helpful, Mr. Hagney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I should have asked you that.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I.
You usually remind me of that.
Yeah, I know. It was, I'm, I'm a little, not a hundred percent. So, um, so if Mr. Bazili would kindly, kindly combine the records for application number nine and number 10, and then you'll have the complete record. I don't know when, um, we can get you back on. The subdivision is a must decide by 3/28. That one also still has extension time on it. Probably safest if you give staff extensions on both.
Certainly.
Okay. Alrighty. And so with that, we will leave this application open. And hopefully we can see you very soon again. I know that, um, the weather is starting to get better and I'm sure you want to move forward.
And we, we certainly appreciate all of the time and effort
Wow.
we're spending on this and.
Well, you know, and you, we keep saying, we love the idea of the preservation. We love what Ms. Stern like talked about. And then I think we're still struggling a little bit with some of the issues and hopefully we can get them resolved and addressed.
We, we don't want you to struggle.
All right. Okey doke. Um, so with that, um, we'll leave those applications open and we will end the public hearing, Mr. Bazili, and we will go into decision mode.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody, for making the time to join us. I'm, no, where's? Keep wanting to ask Mr. Adler. Oh, Mr. Seaman, I'm sorry, we're coming. You get to go home. Thank you. See you soon. Oh, he froze. Okay. Uh, Mr. McRae. We have one decision item. Okay, guys, do you have the energy tonight to have an election as well? I mean, I don't want to press you guys, but we are supposed to have an annual election of officers.
Yeah, but I think, oh, do we have time to hear campaign speeches?
So I've been joking with so many people that there's a new rule on the Greenwich PNC that nobody can whine about any meeting that is less than 24 hours long.
They keep going into the night.
I fell asleep around 2:00 AM. And when I woke up in the morning, they were talking at seven.
Oh, my God.
It went, so I don't know if they took a break, but when they quit after 24 hours, they still had, I can't remember if it was 100 or 200 speakers that had not had an opportunity. Because these guys, you guys would have died. Every single speaker got asked questions. And I wanted to say, you know, on our commission, after 80 people, we would say, stop asking so many questions.
Yeah.
But there's a committee and they asked questions of every speaker. The speakers had three minutes. And every speaker got asked questions by at least one member of the committee. It's seven o'clock in the morning, from seven to 11 this morning, they were less, if they weren't asking as many questions. They were dead. They'd been up all night.
That's.
What would you think, composite of for and against? Was it?
I don't know. I really can't tell. I thought it was very mixed. The, the supporters of the bill felt that it was 70 in favor. But there was a lot of consensus around re, just changing the bill and rewording it, um, and addressing some of the issues, the specific issues. And then there was some discussion of forming a blue ribbon commission. See where it goes. Well, the thing was that the legislature began with something and people are saying they should have started with a blank slate. So there you are.
Yeah, I think it's going to be known as a red ribbon commission, but not to put too much of a political.
So the joke of the day is, okay, planning and zoning commissions, anything less than 24 hours is for sissies.
Yeah.
That was my campaign speech.
You're fired.
But those, those are, those are representatives that get paid big dollars, right? Who were having to listen.
I know. I don't think they get paid much.
They get that, the parking spot.
They get paid more than we do.
Oh, well, yeah, they do. They get paid about $30,000 more than we do, but I don't think it's a real, I don't think it's a.
I, I'm joking. I, I forget it.
I'll ask Fred sometime if he's willing to disclose.
I think, I think Mr. Lowe's putting his hat in the ring is what he's saying and he's.
Well.
No hat, no ring.
Fred watched a couple. Mr. Yaski, are you putting your hat in the ring?
No, but I want to, uh, make a nomination. I nominate that Margarita Albin remain the chair of the planning and zoning, that Nick McCruy beca, remains the secretary. Any seconds?
Second.
Oh, that was a tough.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, my gosh, no campaign speeches?
Are we going with Levy on that one, Pat?
I, I was just gonna ask, did anyone want to claim second on that?
All right.
I don't know that I'm a legitimate second, but I spoke up first, but I, I'm still, you know, a, a, a bit of a piranha or, I mean.
You know, a piranha? Yes, you're a piranha. Absolutely. Yeah, you're a piranha.
You ruined Mr. Levy's perfect game, is that what you're saying?
One more thing, you guys. Apparently in August, our COVID brains forgot to re-nominate Rhonda Cohen at some point for the Architectural Review Committee. We all thought she was marvelous. We interviewed her. She was great and we probably forgot to nominate her. I hereby move that Rhonda Cohen be nominated to the Architectural Review Committee for a term of another four years, which I guess will start.
Go for it, Peter.
All in favor? I'll just take a voice vote.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Okay.
The Peter show if you said it up second.
All right. Now, Mr. McRae, does anybody have any other business I feel doing on how much fun legislation is?
I'd just like to o, uh, offer my congratulations to the two candidates who won. And what a fine job they did on the trail. And we hope they continue to do so.
Here, here.
I tell you, it, I, I wish I could send you some of the video clips from last night. It was just, oh, gosh, it was so.
Don't do it. There's, for the two hours I listened, I, I, I had about 15 annoyances that I couldn't sleep on.
Wish you had heard New Haven talk about, and you know Greenwich this and Greenwich that, that was the constant issue. Greenwich is, um, in fact, um, there was no puppy. Okay. Mr., oh, my goodness. Is that a new puppy?
No, she's very old.
Okay, Mr. McRae, before we descend into puppies and grandchildren and babies, you better stop us.
Yes, let's stop us in, uh, what is it? 90 Harding Road, application PLPZ 2021-052. Final site plan and special permit applicant seeking approval for demolition reconstruction at Easton Greenwich Civic Center, a new single-story building, parking areas, loading dock, vehicle pickup and drop-off lane. Reconfiguration of existing surface parking and related site and store warrant administrates in the improvements in the R7 zone. Uh, whereas the P, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, granted MI status, uh, preliminary site plan approval to the project on 11/17/20. And the applicant has provided, uh, the community needs summary report dated 11/14/18 to the commission. The commission finds that as, uh, stated in the MI approval, the proposal is consistent with the 2009 plan of conservation and development guiding principles 4.1c, 4.2d, 4.3q, 4.5g and six. Uh, zoning issue comments on 3/9/21 indicating proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulations and endorse the project for zoning permit sign-off. Sewer issue comments on 3/11/21 indicating no issues to be addressed during P&amp;Z review phase. Engineering issue comments of 3/5/21 indicating engineering concerns could be addressed prior to zoning permit sign-off. Uh, ARC issue comments at their 2/3/21, meeting requesting return with construction documents. Parking, the applicant identified 20 install parkings. Uh, that's good. Let's see, conservation, uh, issue comments on 3/9/1 indicating recommendations for site plan improvement. Wetlands issued a permit to conduct regulated activities dated 10/29/20. That HDC issued a letter, uh, 3/21, 3/12/21 outlining the historic aspects of the existing building. Yeah, the P&amp;Z commission agrees that this is a significant municipal architecture in the heart of Old Greenwich and requires that the architectural detail represented to be incorporated into the final building. Therefore, motion to approve the application with the following comments, uh, recommended comments. Conservation recommends that the rain gardens be seeded with flowering native meadow mix to provide a pollinator habitat. The applicant is to provide a full copy of the community needs summary report facility program opinion of cost prepared by Sports Facility Advisory dated 11/14/18 for record. Yeah, applicant is to provide to HDC a comprehensive photo record of the existing structure and any plans they possess from the original building. Um, and prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall return to ARC prior to 50% of construction drawings to review and confirm the following detail. Building material samples and colors, window cut size, layout, and detail. Exterior residential, uh, exterior door cuts, uh, size and detail, rake details, final site signage program, lighting fixture specifications, and to confirm ballers to no, uh, shall not exceed 30 inches. The light spillage has been minimized, proposed fence posts are square, interior spaces that are seen through glazing utilized materials that relate to exterior architectural elements as they're viewed together. The facade of the building is not to be eliminated. Boulders used on the site should be native and not transported to the site. Final details on drainage and scuppers and the use of, uh, rain chains. Landscape materials are following the tree wardens, tree warden Kramer's suggestions to the extent possible. And final location of the proposed bike racks. Uh, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Okey dokey, that's his, that's his punchline when he says that.
Second.
Didn't want to spoil the record. Okey dokey, I'll take a voice vote. Mr. Levy? Mr. Yaski and the puppy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And, um, okey dokey, uh, what else? Anything else? Anybody want to talk about anything exciting or do you want to go to sleep? Dennis is gone. All right. Anybody got any party shots? No? All right. Bye, everybody.
Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.